And you didn't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm muted.
You good?
Whatever you didn't know.
The Facebook's down nationwide right now.
Well.
What a tragedy.
What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? The roads better flip off tomorrow.
Too bad it wasn't tomorrow.
Something good would you thank us for.
Shock.
What's going on your record?
It's not on the record, I don't care.
Over your file.
Person helps.
We're good to go, or we're waiting?
Yeah, we're good.
We're good? Okay, we'll get the workshop started. This is in preparation for the regular meeting, March 6th. And it's ten thirty something on March 5th. Lisa.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. French Cow.
Commissioner, we do have guests from City of Gerard wanting to talk about their ARPA requests. Mr. Ponzio is here as the State Service Director, he has a consultant with him as well. Sal, do you wanna... The floor is yours if you wanna...
Sure, well, first of all, I wanted to mention the, our request from a month or so ago about, for our ambulance.
Yes.
So, I didn't know where that was at, Danny.
What we did is we submitted one of our ambulance requests. We had four of them.
Right.
And, and we, we're waiting to hear if that passes. If that passes, then that pays away for the other three.
Okay.
So, right now, we don't know if ambulance is qualified or not. As soon as we get the response, hopefully this week, that one was submitted a week or two ago. We just haven't got it back from the attorney.
Okay.
If she says that's good, then we know the other one's good.
It'll fall right in line with that.
If not, then we'll come back to you and let you know, redo something else, or whatever guidance they give us regarding ambulance mode at that time.
Very good. And then the second reason I was here today is that, as you know, the City of Gerard owns the Gerard Lake. And FEMA has determined that our dam is a high hazard dam. So, there's three dams in Trumbull County that are considered a safety risk, and ours is one of them. So, to that end, we are asking for letters of support for the federal government, the state government, Sheriff Brown, and Carson Joyce. And then, so, we have hired a co-consorting to help us with this process of getting additional money to do all the repairs that are necessary at the dam. The hope is that...
So, you wanna do repairs of the dam and bring Gerard Lake back again?
Well, well, so, there's two, so, it's clear, there was two lakes. The lower lake, that, that dam was breached years ago.
That's done.
But we have a beautiful seven hundred acre...
Right.
...property with a two hundred acre lake that we plan on using for future recreation and economic development for the whole community. So, in order to do that, though, we need to make sure the dam is safe, needs to withstand a thirty inch rainfall in six hours, is what the federal government and ODNR is telling us. So, there are, we're doing engineering studies right now. FEMA is giving us some support, but of course, to repair the dam's gonna cost millions of dollars to bring it up to their safety standards. So, this is, and we, this is our, our step is going to, the federal government to ask us, to ask them for some support with it. But I'm gonna let Gina and I go through it.
Who owns your dam?
The city of Gerard owns...
You guys own it?
We own it.
So, it is a public entity?
It is a public entity.
Unlike Colberg, which is a private owned.
No.
Correct.
No, we are...
Then it's public.
Right. So, FEMA is helping us somewhat with some of this.
So, at this stage in the game, you're asking for a letter of support...
Mm-hmm.
...to, to secure the fund?
Absolutely.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's all right.
A hundred percent, I'll give that. I think it shows just that the last dam was breached. Back in the day, I wish you had the money to do something about that, and it just...
Right.
It's still sick and...
It was sad to see that.
...time I drive down Route 11, and I'd see a big hole there that could've been lakefront property and, you know...
And beautiful fishing spot, and, and absolutely, yeah.
Yes. Will you forward the letter of support over to us, and we can sign it?
Yeah, of course.
And put it on the agenda, if that's okay? Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
Did we...
There's two there that, um, we wrote up. One will for sure go to Senator Brown for his appropriations request, and then we're potentially going to send one to Congressman Joyce's office, and even potentially Senator Vance.
I think that's wise.
Um, but Senator...
Yeah.
Senator Brown is our number one focus right now. It's a wonderful project that I think should get funding, no doubt. Um, but Sal pretty much touched on everything. It's a high hazard risk in the county, so I think it's extremely important to get funding for it, so...
So, I spoke to Sal a couple of weeks ago, and he mentioned about this, and I said, "The best thing to do is come to the workshop and explain it." Um, we do have, Jim is gonna touch on an ambulance that we're, that we're passing, so that should be no problem.
Requesting.
Requesting?
Opinion.
And the opinion came back positive?
No, no.
Oh, oh, we haven't got the opinion.
Oh, I thought we got the opinion.
Okay, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, we had Champion, Braceville...
Okay.
Um, I apologize.
Right.
Johnson...
Yep.
And Gerard.
Have all been requested, but Gerard is not.
Right, but the first one, I think it was Champion, is, is in request, and they're waiting to get approved.
The, all, the, all four are being requested.
At the same time?
Yeah, it's in the, it's...
So, it's one patent?
Our, our defense is legal last week.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And they, just, just not to, not to jump, jump ahead, just I just wanna let you know, because I'm not really feeling that well, but, uh, we did send the Colberg Dam request study, and the McDonald Fire PPE, and radio also, and you did get three responses favorable for the four hundred and sixteen thousand and change for Stormwater Management in Brookfield.
Oh, good.
A hundred thousand for the Valley Counseling, known as Family and Community Services, and five hundred and eighty-five thousand for the West Reserve Port Authority Sanitary Sewer Line.
That's big, that's huge.
The last one's up there.
All the authorities are waiting for that.
That's all I have to offer, I don't wanna spend too much time.
Not a problem, Jim.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Good luck.
And so, just an update on that, uh, you know, they're, they're at legal right now, so...
Yeah, well, once we get those, you'll, you'll hear about that.
But we are in that, though.
You're in the hopper, but not on that, on that sheet.
Just not been confirmed yet, but I don't think that there's gonna be an issue with approving ambulances, but we still have to get the legal thing.
I understand. If anybody has anything else, let me know.
Okay, all right, Jim, thank you.
Well, and I, I would say, too, yeah, I would wholeheartedly, that letter, it's just a letter of support. I mean, I'll, I'll fight tooth and nail with that thing to help you guys with that, everything that I can do as Commissioner, 'cause what I've learned, a lot, big lesson on Lower Gerard Lake, and there, the house, you know, the house is on that lake, the lakefront property, you know, you've got the church up there, everyone rallies around the lake, and that's, we can't lose that. I mean, we can't.
Thank you, guys.
That would be, um, horrible if we can't figure out a way to pay for that.
Do you want me to send it, or...
When did you send it?
Do you have copy? I have one, um, I can resend it though, a minute.
You can resend.
Yeah, okay.
Please.
Yeah.
Yeah, not a problem.
Um, no, I can, okay, I'll get it from him.
And if there's nothing else, you guys are willing to stay, but if you, if you have other things...
Jimmy, do you wanna say something? Uh, we'll stick around for a few weeks, then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Jim, where's your, Sal, it's with you guys joining 911, was that the...
Uh, I was actually gonna wait until Director Bond had her, uh, time to shine here, but, uh...
Go ahead.
Okay, well, we've been, uh, corresponding back and forth. Um, she's been very responsive, she's worked very diligently to make this happen. Um, we're kinda caught up in the legal side of things now, just to try to get, uh...
Yeah, so, the short version, I guess, would be, um, eight to nine, 911 Director. Uh, short version is, we're ready to go with the equipment. Um, we ran it through legal, I was working with Sam. Basically, everything has to go, be amended in the 911 Final Plan. Since our 911 Final Plan, um, lacked structure for the last several years, um, and the state has rolled out a new 911 fillable form of how they want all eighty-eight counties to do the 911 Final Plan. That way, they're all uniform and easier for the state to follow up on. Um, we've been working through that with them. Those are due April 3rd. Um, they're aware that not many counties are gonna meet that deadline, just because it has to go through all the boards, and all the council trustees, and all the entities, um, as it's called, the 911 Program Meeting. So, we've amended, um, to add Gerard into one of our service areas in there, so we're, I just have a kind of tentative contract for our services with them to legal. Um, they're reviewing that now. Um, we should be able to bring them on as far as service goes, prior to the 911 Final Plan being amended. We just have to list in the contract that that's happening. So, that's all being done in the background, as far as the legal side, I sent that up to Sam, I think, yesterday. So, once we get that from them, we'll be legal as far as, you know, until that 911 Final Plan gets amended. Uh, but we're probably gonna be bringing them on within the next week or two, I would say. We wanted to make sure we did all the stuff legally before we...
Fire only, right?
Fire only, correct, at this time.
Okay, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both for making that happen.
Thank you.
Um, let's go to, if we can, can we unblock Martha, just see if she wants to pipe in on anything ARPA related while she's, I know she's out of town, I don't wanna take her whole day if, uh, we can't. But Martha, if you're on the line, should you star six? Star six, Martha, if you're on the line.
I'm on, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
All right, um, regarding the Gerard request, her last week's Commissioner meeting, you put it on the maybe list. The only ones that were sent were Champion, Bizetta, Johnson, and Braceville.
Well, then, we, I think we're in an agreement here that we wanna send it along with...
Yeah, but we were gonna follow suit. Once we found out if one went through, then the other ones will slide through quickly, right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner, that what you said last week in the meeting, in the regular meeting, was to put the four, and to hold off on Gerard, and leave it on the maybe. If you want it to be sent, I will have Jim send it, but if that's the consensus, but you, when we, I, I specifically asked if you wanted to leave it on the maybe, and that's what the consensus was.
That must've been because we were just pending whether it was gonna qualify or not. And that's the only reason I think we would've sent that.
I think, I think we're moving it forward now.
Yeah.
That's fine. If that's the case, I will make sure that Jim sends it over. Um, I'll send him an email and tell him that per your request, um, it's being sent.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Anything else you have for us right now, or do you wanna go back in queue?
Um, I'll go back. I don't really have anything updated on ARPA. We did, I think, um, we had some requests from the Sheriff's Office that I haven't had a chance to put onto the Commissioner Drive. It's my understanding, they wanna address their requests. I have some that they, um, for body cameras, and I can't remember the other one that was done several weeks ago, that I put on the drive, let you guys know it was there at the time, and then, um, they have a newer one that I didn't get a chance to do before I left town. But it will go on the drive.
Okay.
All right? That's it right now.
Very good, we'll, we'll talk to you in a little bit. Thank you. Anyone else have anything that needs to come right to the top? All right, we'll get through this quickly. Um, expenses, the reading of minutes, approve the bills, approve the annual appropriation resolution, provide current expenses and other expenditures, Trumbull County during the fiscal year ending December thirty-one and twenty-four, the general fund and all other funds of Trumbull County. To appoint any more Board of President, or any more President Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, as Board Commit, Representative to the Board of Revision, and appoint Commissioner Mark Anamalasa as the alternate representative of the Board of Revision. The Board of Revision is a statutory, created quasi judicial body consisting of the County Treasurer, Auditor, and one member of the Board of Commissioners, or the representative designated. The Board of Revision is required to hear complaints related to valuation or assessment of real property, as the same appears on the tax duplicate of the current year. Um, and this was brought up last week, and, um, no offense to the other Commissioner, but she did have a intent to challenge, uh, some property values of houses that she owns, and I know she said she was an appraiser and stuff, and her appraiser license expired in twenty twelve, I believe, but, um, that, that's neither here nor there. The, uh, you know, we, we did it this way for reasons, so there's no conflict, or to try to avoid conflict.
I don't think either of us have challenged.
I have not.
I have not, either.
Uh, five, to amend item number thirteen, Commissioner's regular meeting agenda, to appoint three Trumbull County residents as members of Trumbull County Tax Incentive Review Council, for the term February one through January thirty-one, and comply with the ORC. An amendment is necessary to remove Mark Anamalasa, and appoint Mr. Mark Phillips as his al- alternate, and a change location of the meeting. Um, the meeting is Thursday, March fourteenth, on the third floor, Training Room. Um, and this was something we appointed all three of us, and you're gonna replace yourself with Mr. Phillips.
Yes, uh, it was a fine, you know, I think, um, obviously, serving on boards is very important, but keeping it at arms length with this is also kind of important, too, for me. Um, Mark Phillips is IBW President, uh, very respected, and, uh, the approach he made about serving, and I, he can serve in my stead.
He's a good asset, too.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, number six, award a contract of lowest and best bid submitted by Proscape, Septic, and Landscape Contractors, to replace three home sewage treatment systems for income qualified households located in Braceville, Bloomfield, and Johnson, who are eligible for assistance to the PY twenty-three HSTS Reserve Program in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred. Uh, award a contract of lowest and best bid by two home services, for home sewage treatment systems, and Hartford and Howland, for those that are eligible. And eight, to award a price proposal submitted by A&amp;N Restaurant Equipment and Supplies, in the amount of seventeen thousand for the Howland Scope Center Facility, located at eighty-three, eighty-two seventy-three High Street in Warren, and authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to enter into contract agreement with A&amp;N Restaurant Equipment and Supplies, in order to meet the rules and regulations of the CDBG program and local county requirements. So, I take it that they are paying for that out of some form of a grant stuff, it's not coming out of our general fund, Commissioner?
Five, two fifty-eight and two fifty, or two twenty-five are grant funds, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Number nine, concur with Senior Services Advisory Council recommendation for the distribution of Ohio Healthy Aging Grant, and authorize distribution to agencies for contractual terms as listed for the term effective April one through September thirtieth, for acceptance of letters of interest for senior programs that's funded by the Ohio Healthy Aging Grant per January five notification. And this is what we went over last week, um, in our meeting, uh, with Senior Services, and this is spelled out, the, the grant money we got, which is a one-time deal from the state, um, totaling somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so.
Seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and...
Very good.
Yeah, one million, almost three, one point three million.
And this here, is this everything we talked about, or were there any changes from last week?
Uh, Commissioner, I'd like to reiterate, the technology program that we're introducing, too, is kinda, uh, interesting and innovative for the seniors. That Rendevir program was, uh, talked about by your board, Diane, that was, um, will help with Alzheimer's, and it's sort of this, lack of a better word, we, we wear these, like, goggles, and it's like a three D type of thing, and you go to different scenes and everything. It's, uh, something we normally wouldn't be able to do without this grant, so, um, it's very helpful, and a lot of this stuff is very helpful, so...
There's over ninety thousand dollars invested in technology type related things?
Yeah, yeah.
And a lot of these things, like Diane told us last week, these are cutting-edge things, where a senior who's going through some dementia, they can go on a tour of Italy, or they can go on a vacation with, virtually...
Yes, that's...
With these things, and they've seen great results, especially with dementia patients, and even Alzheimer patients reacting to old memories that they're seeing virtually, and that, and they probably, they can't even grasp that. I mean, it's something that's gotta be so overwhelming, that, that adds adrenaline rushes and everything else to them, and it gives them that euphoric feeling that they probably haven't had in a long, long time.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's, that's kinda neat, that, that, that program's going on. But then, there are all sorts of things in here.
Hello.
For meal services, and kinda patched all the holes of...
Oh, yeah.
If we had more money, what would we do?
Yep.
It was a very fair process, where people were able to apply, and they did apply, and then they just were screened, and the ones that were most deserving got it. And Diane, I commend you and your board, because there were some things in there, I'm like, wow, that's a good choice they made here, and this group shouldn't've got this if they didn't report their stuff correctly in the past. They shouldn't be rewarded with more stuff, and, um, we were able to spread it all around, all around the county, including Gerard again. So, that's, that's something that's...
And, and hats off to your board for putting in hours of work, they're volunteers, and they put literally hours and hours of work into this, and, uh, we're going with their exact recommendation, so...
Yeah, it's not easy, we're going through this ARPA stuff.
Oh, yeah.
You only have so much money, and you wanna spread it out fairly, it's not easy, and, and I think we covered a huge diversity of clientele with this, and, um, it's gonna do a lot of good. Thank you to state for coming up with this program also, with their leftover ARPA funds.
Absolutely.
And giving this one-time blessing.
Thank you.
Okay, ten, exercise Trumbull County's option to renew the contract by and between Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, direction Home of Eastern Ohio, Area Agency on Aging, Social Systems Management System for additional one-year period, effective March one through February twenty-eighth, the base cost is five grand annually, plus renewable license fee for providers, six licenses needed at this time, for a total amount, including the base rate of seventy-four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, this, uh, is, Diane, what does this do exactly?
Number ten and eleven are just annual maintenance type of agenda items. One, uh, number ten, which is...
Yeah, sorry about that.
This is Diane from the Senior Levy Administration. Uh, number ten is to, um, renew our annual contract that we do with, um, Direction Home in order to use their database, their software. And number eleven is an annual, um, local share that we help assist Direction Home with, in order for them to get their Title Twenty funding. So, they're just annual repeat agenda items.
Thank you. Okay, so, ten, eleven, good?
No general fund used.
All right, number twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old engineer. Wonder, we haven't had anyone from the engineer's office in about a month here at these meetings.
No.
Um, I don't know, it must be busy, but, uh, number twelve, this is a right-of-way permit, Eastern Natural Gas, Richard Hale, Dominion East Ohio, ASW Pipeline, Corilla Contractors, and then we have a special annual supplier fleet permit, Bronyak Brothers Paving and Always Construction, and then close the road on Old Town McDonald Road, located in Weathersfield Township, between March eleventh and March fifteenth. Um, number fifteen, approve the consultant agreement modifications for the TRU Old Town Viaduct. It's an Ohio Department of Transportation Prepared Agreement modification between the county and consultant, in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand eight oh six for additional work for the completion of the project development process through the construction phase. Revised contract amount will therefore be four hundred and thirty-six thousand six twenty-eight. Modifications necessary to encumber the additional funding for the agreement in order to complete all design tasks per negotiated fee proposal. And that's, uh, from a block grant, East Gate and Engineer's Office.
Looks like highway.
Pardon me?
It does look like highway, under O two.
Very good. May you award the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by RT Vernal Paving and Excavating, North Lima, for the True West Liberty Street, Trumbull Avenue Resurfacing Project, located in Liberty and Weathersfield, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-six thousand five ninety-one, and enter into contract for said, said project. Other bids submitted were Shelley and Sands, Corilla Contractors, Cole Burton Contractors, Barbicus Construction, and the Shelley Company, and six seventy-six was the lowest responsive and responsible bid, so they went with them. Seventeen, authorize Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for letters of interest for engineering services related to the TRU Genesee Avenue Elm Road Intersection Improvements. That'll be effective right there, that's kind of a, a little project, it sounds like. You know anything about that?
I don't. Is anybody on the, uh, on the line from the engineer's office?
Hit star six if you are. I know they got that little island there, it's kinda odd...
Right.
Coming out of the Giant Eagle Plaza and...
Valley there.
Yeah, it kinda never made sense with the island and around it, do you go left, do you go right? If you wanna head over toward the church or whatever, you're gonna make the sharp right. Um, so hopefully that'll move things out there, or whatever. Eighteen, to extend the dispatch services agreement binding between Trumbull County and the City of Warren, wherein Trumbull County 911 Center shall serve as dispatch center for the City of Warren. City Warren agrees to pay Trumbull County the amount of six hundred and thirty-one thousand eight ninety-three per year, to be paid in quarterly payments of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, shall be effective January one through December thirty-first, and allow Trumbull County to time to amend 911 Final Plan as a more permanent solution to existing three-year contracts. And Tacey, I know last year, we just renewed what we had before, and there was no negotiation, there was no talking about it, and Patty said, "We're gonna wait till we get a new director, and then we'll sit down and renew it, and we'll negotiate with them to figure out the real cost." Is this a carryover of another year, or have you sat down and actually, is this the real cost that we're at? Not to put you on the spot, but Patty kind of started that last year.
Uh, excuse me, Diane, I want to know the director. Um, we sat down and had a little bit of a chat with them. Basically what we discovered through the course of looking at the call for service rates and how that all had previously been done is over the last ten to twelve years, those increases weren't happening. So originally it's supposed to be a call for service rate for all the agencies we dispatch for and then it was supposed to be reviewed by the CPI every year and. Based on that, over the course of those ten years, it was a thirty percent increase that we never collected on. Um, obviously when we proposed that to all the other agencies, they kind of, you know, went over like a lead balloon to jump thirty percent in a, in a year's time, which we didn't wanna do, obviously. Um, this year we did a ten percent increase based on twenty-twenty-two's calls for service. Um, that way we could get those numbers to everybody prior to their budget talks in October of last year. So we'll run two years behind on calls for service. Uh, what we did with Warren, because we couldn't figure out what, um, math variable they used to come up with that money, is we sat down and we looked at, okay, we absorbed six dispatchers from Warren back when they came over to Turnbull nine-one-one. Base wages for six multiplied by six, which is that, how many came up with the number, which was like five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then we took their calls for service and instead of doing seven dollars for call for service like we were charging all the other entities, we did three dollars and fifty cents, like a half rate. That got us close to what they were currently being charged, were like eight thousand dollars of an increase from this year. So while they didn't jump like everybody else ten percent, um, we also had long discussions of, well, you know, Warren isn't currently being used as a backup as originally, you know, talked about in their nine-one-one plan. We don't have the equipment to do that. Um, so those, you know, discussions kinda took place and they were happy with, you know, the eight thousand dollar increase. It's a little less than two percent, um, but being that when you break it down in the lion's share of, you know, whose calls are going to what, it didn't look like it was a very fair and equitable across the board to jump that up ten percent and maybe pay, you know, well over what everyone else is. Um, they seem agreeable to this year. Uh, we have to revise it for the nine-one-one final plan going forward, so, you know, we're looking at various options. I know one of the ideas was popu- charging by population, which you were at the last meeting we discussed. Uh, by doing that, the small entities that really don't use nine-one-one services that much or don't have a lot of calls for services, it was charging them a hundred and sixteen dollars per call. So this way it's a little more fair and equitable across the board. Like, if you're the busier agency, you're gonna get the brunt of the costs. Um, we did find a way to tweak the reports, um, so people aren't getting double billed as much. Um, it's not gonna be a perfect system because obviously with CAD and computer reports, you know, things aren't gonna be perfect. Um, we did also look at a way where when you dispatch, say, ten agencies to a call, let's say you have an all-call and ten agencies are sent out. If only five of them go, then those five agencies would be billed. So we're looking at those various options of how we can tweak those reports and I'm currently testing them. We, we've got the reports built. So we're tweaking those and the numbers might end up getting revised before the end of this year and people's rates might go down a little bit. Uh, but as I said, it's not gonna be a perfect system. There's no really easy way to, you know, cookie cutter say, well, this agency owes this, this agency owes that. Um, as far as Warren, I know they would probably get in a, they would much rather have a long-term contract as opposed to having to review this every year. So I think, um, what I'm gonna propose to the nine-one-one, uh, Program Review Committee is potentially putting in a two or three percent escalator to them based off of this year's wages or rate. Um, that way we don't have to renegotiate with them every single year. Obviously with all the other entities, um, Patty runs those reports yearly anyway, so we can continue to do that based off of their calls for service. This, uh, this year I think it brings in about an extra two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in being that we're cleaning up some CAD issues from the passures, you know, where there was talk, going through a new CAD project. Uh, we add a bill of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we paid last week for CAD just to catch us up to current. Um, so horrible because the, the extra money that we are bringing in, that I was hoping to get us some new equipment, take care of some needs over there, um, basically just wanted to catch us up to where we are and we're still behind the eight ball. Program Review Committee that was in last week, we took them down to dispatch unless they see. We currently have three desks that are breaking regularly. Maintenance has come in multiple times. They're at the point where they can't really do anything else with them. I am looking at preparing quotes for getting new dispatch consoles. Obviously, you know, if we potentially move into a new building, all that stuff's gonna be new going in, but we can't limp along for two more years with what we have. Our computers are over eight years old. Um, every Tuesday when the generator starts, Patty and I are sitting there holding our breath. Uh, every morning when my computer turns on, it, it sounds like me that when I wake up in the morning, it's freaks and groans, you know, uh, when you're turning it on. So we're in dire need of needing to update a lot of our technology over there. And just to even limp along for the two years that potentially it'll take to move into a new building. Um, what I would like to do is if we can get new furniture this year, we'll build into the quote, um, that when we move potentially that, that'll be part of their, you know, process of they'll come in and take the equipment out and move it to the new building for us and have that all included. Um, but basically we're limping along and we can't make any forward progress because our technologies go out of date. Um, I know just talking with Ken's guys, a lot of our switches and routers don't support the bandwidth speeds that we have. So why are we paying, you know, ten thousand dollars a month for bandwidth when we're getting a tenth of what the speeds that we're paying for because our equipment and switches don't support it? Um, but the other issue you run into at the same time is when you get in there to replace those things, it's a rat's nest of fifteen years of cabling. You know, so it's gonna be a big project and it's gonna cost us a lot of money to get things going. But that's kinda where we're at with all the contracts. Um, so to answer the question originally posed, uh, Warren, it is a extension for one year, but it is an increase of about nine thousand dollars.
Which CAD are we using?
We still have ID Networks.
Why?
Yeah, well, geez.
That's a very, uh.
Let me.
Yeah.
I thought we, we purchased Inteltech.
Inteltech was purchased by the Sheriff's Office for Jail Management and they had some CAD positions added on. That was not posed to us as being an option, as like we didn't tag onto that. Um, I came from Inteltech. Uh, I would not go to that system if given the choice. Um, the problem with CADs are if you don't go with one of the major companies, and when I say major companies, I'm talking Tyler, which is Munis, it's through Tyler, Central Square, Motorola. If you don't go with one of those big ones, they're the ones that are eating all the smaller ones. Inteltech is a smaller one. ID Networks has a lot more in Virginia.
What about Sunburst or Sun?
Sundance is another one of the smaller ones. You know, realistically, if it was me and, and I had my druthers of what I would like to do, when we move into a new building, I would say, let's do a new CAD project at the same time, roll that into the notes. And then in the two years of we're doing construction and renovation, we could do the backend build of the CAD and all the backend work, cause it'll take about eighteen months to do a CAD as well. Um, unfortunately, you know, champagne taste on a mirror budget. It, it's the best way to describe it. I mean, I know in our previous county, we had four hundred thousand dollars, so we ended up with Inteltech and for twelve years we had nothing but headaches.
But ID Networks was nothing but headaches.
ID Networks was nothing but headaches either. Um, they're not very happy with me this week because, um, Leap Year, perfect example. On Leap Year, we had issues where we had to manually enter all our data because it was Leap Year, it didn't work. So I sent them an email. They're like, yeah, we're aware of the problem. I said, so you need to tell me four years ago on Leap Year, you had the same problem and nobody addressed it. So they don't like me very much there right now, which I don't worry there. Um.
I think Tacy too, you should talk about the bridges. So we have to pay extra money to bridge the gap between the CAD.
Right.
Whether we are with ID Networks or Inteltech.
And, and.
So until we get a fully baked CAD system, she's not incorrect in what she's saying. We're actually paying more to bridge the gap to keep, we gotta get to a brand-new place eventually, um.
We essentially have people on, you know, Niles, Lowerstown.
Right.
And, you know, uh, e- and even Warren. Warren just went to.
And we're bridging that gap too.
Uh, Warren just went to Mark Forty-three.
Right.
That's another one. And so, so now there's like four vendors, so you have to pay a bridge and then if you don't play nice with this one, then they want twenty grand for the bridge. It, it's a nightmare. And unfortunately, until the state kinda pushes their kinda, as you meant core services of where they're trying to roll out and get everybody on the same platform.
I was just gonna say, I mean, why are we?
Other states do it. Pennsylvania.
I mean, I know it's their prerogative to go with whoever they want, but it, it seems like we're having to eat the cost and the inefficiency of that.
It's the drive of the whole world state, unfortunately. You know, like Indy, uh, Indiana, Illinois, they're all on one system. And while not, everybody might not like it, you can go from this side of Indiana to that side of Indiana and transfer calls with no issue. Um, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution because the other issue you run into, okay, so for us at nine-one-one, we need a CAD system that we put in the calls when we dispatch the officers. But over here on the report side, you need the RMS, you need the reporting side, you need the jail management software, the fire department needs something. You don't have a good CAD that's police and fire both. They're either really good at police or you have one that's really good at fire. So you, then you need to find companies that work well together that have integrated.
I think by now one of these companies would get, you know.
You would think.
All of this together and say, you know, this is, this is efficient for both and right across the board.
While we're, I mean.
It's a money.
The, the.
Yeah.
The issue for me is you have.
It's a money scheme.
At the top of government, I'm not talking local government, at the top of government, they're not prioritizing the funding where it needs to be.
Right.
The easiest answer is to take your cell phone that you pay twenty-five cents for, for nine-one-one and make it three dollars. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Or say us, we get one point, I think, what is it, one point four, I think, from the nine-one-one money.
Mm-hmm.
Change it to, let's say, two dollars and fifty cents or ten times more. We would get fourteen million dollars. With fourteen million dollars, I'd never have to ask you guys for money for anything.
Right.
We would be able to pay our staff, we would be able to raise rates, we would be able to do all the technology that needs to be done. The problem that we're in locally is when was the, when was the flood at the nine-one-one center about fourteen, fifteen years ago?
At least.
At least.
Two thousand three.
So since then, nothing's been done or updated as far as, I mean, computers, I think, were maybe eight years ago.
Yeah.
But, so, we were, I was in the same boat in Huron County. We had no money. We didn't have, we were behind, same exact situation as here. What we did there is we had the nine-one-one levy, that brought in five million dollars and instantly I had money to fix it. Money, I mean, people say money can't buy happiness. It one hundred percent can, cause you can pay for all the things that you need, which is technology and, and all those things, you know.
Well, it shouldn't be kicked down to the local level to, for us to go put on levies to do that.
It, it should.
Because we're levied to death around here.
No, and I.
And the state is sitting on a lot of money.
One hundred percent.
Which is, which is more upset.
And that's the part that's irritating for us because we know that money will fix our problems, but at the state level, they will not raise that cell phone fee. They did raise it this year to seventy cents, uh, or I'm sorry, forty cents, but then you get seventy percent of it, so twenty-eight cents. So three more cents is what we're getting now. And they're reviewing that in a year, so that's not gonna do anything. A lot of that money's going into the core services, the backbone and the infrastructure to try to get onto one system. But they've been talking about that since I took office first as a director six years ago. And now they're saying within two years it's gonna be live. They do have some pilot programs in Southern Ohio that are actively being tested and are supposed to be working, but we all know how state-run systems work. I mean, Mark's radios, everything else. There are issues with it, you know, so.
And unfortunately, there, we're left with unfunded mandates. Like, we have to.
One hundred percent.
We have to do this and we gotta find the money to do it.
One hundred percent.
And it's an increasing cost on a limited budget that we have.
Right.
And without the state actually assisting and pulling their weight.
Right.
It, it makes it harder and harder for us.
And, and that's the same thing with, you know, as we talked about the reclassification. There's a big push for that right now too. Uh, I was just telling Alex, one of our candidates who we were starting the background process on, I was excited about hopefully being able to offer him a job. He just got hired a job in Family Services within the county, three dollars more an hour and Monday through Friday.
Yeah, we can't hide that.
You know, I mean, so obviously, why wouldn't you take that job? So good for him, good luck to him, you know? But, um, that's kinda where the issue lies, is everybody wants to make more money and everybody wants more funding, but at the end of the day, who's gonna pay for it? And unfortunately, technology changes so fast, we're constantly behind the eight ball. We're just playing catch-up. So, you know, ideally, given bucket list, we need new furniture, that's a priority. We need new computers and new monitors and that will limp us along until we get into a new building.
Well, you got, we, we accounted for that. We, we know we're doing that. I mean, we're doing both, obviously, with a new building, but in the meantime, in the, in the immediate term.
Right.
That needs to be addressed.
In the immediate, and, and I can probably budget for the computers and the, and the monitors. I don't know about the furniture, cause that's gonna be a chunk of change. But that's kinda what we're looking at.
And the board is in wholehearted.
And I appreciate that.
You need to get what you need.
I appreciate that one hundred percent. I think in the short term, what we need since the, um, feasibility study is moving forward is we probably need a ballpark tentative figure of what that budget's gonna look like for a new building. Just so I can tell the feasibility study and the consultants, hey, you know, not to exceed X amount of dollars because, I mean, if it was me, I'd be like, hey, I want a seven million dollar building with all this and, you know, little massage chairs while we're working on that.
Not to throw a wrench in everything, Commissioner, but we need to send Bill Hart on another field trip this week. Because, uh, I got a phone call yesterday, a local businessman, Ken and Derek, bought a building on Elm Road next to the Nards, it's the old Sprint building.
Yeah.
And it's got four acres of parking. It's got every type of fiber optic thing you can think of inside. It's already wired for technology and for communications. And, uh, it has a, like, sixteen-bait service garage in there. It's where they serviced all the vehicles. And I know we're having some issues with Panther, possibly moving out of there. And when they called, he called with the Realtor, Mr. Kraus, and said, this is perfect. You got half a building. Could be your maintenance department, uh, auto. He said you could pull the trucks in there. He said they stored all of the Sprint vehicles in there and all the different phone companies that's been over the years. And half the building, the other half has plenty of room to be a nine-one-one center. Can you come look at it? So we've been remorse, we didn't look at it at least. Call Mr. Kraus. Okay, and he, uh, he said he can meet with you tomorrow and should be the first ones to see it. But it's on Elm Road, so that's relocated again. Um, if for some reason they say, yeah, I love the current location, don't get me wrong. But it's, we, we'd be remiss if we didn't at least look at it.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we are in need of a new place for our vehicles and, and vehicles under roof could be great. It might even be a possibility there. If not, then the engineer's office might like it. I mean, we're, we're looking for a place to store trucks or whatever. They've, they've stored that stuff inside of that building.
Wanna talk a little bit about the move from Panther and Family Dollar back there too?
I looked at that property, go over some kind of maintenance. Um, I looked at that property, but I don't, I don't know what it would cost to purchase the property, but the land bank has some property, uh, the Chrysler King, that fourteen acres.
That's the one I was talking about, yeah.
And then there's also the place across from DBSD's, that property that's theirs free.
That we initially looked at the dog mouth.
For, it's in Warren Township, possibly. Um, and then if I look at this place here in, uh, on Elm Road and Tacy, uh, Mr. Blasky, our neighbor over here, I talked to him about spaces. Um, he said the Sprint building down here is also empty, across the street from the police department. So I don't know what's.
Oh, the, uh.
The old Sprint or.
Whatever.
AT&T, whatever it was.
Uh, but then it was, uh, yeah.
So that's another possibility as well for you to look at it, DB. I'm still waiting on Bruce to get ahold of me to look at that piece of.
That's right next to a police.
Let me know when you look at the others, otherwise, uh, tomorrow. I don't know what time, but tomorrow.
Tomorrow afternoon, he had availability, so he, he can call up to the meeting and figure out.
The, so the Sprint building, which was, um, it, the name escapes me now, but it's right next to the police department.
Over here, down here, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
But that used to be, um.
It should be AT&T or, um.
But then it became something else. I know exactly what you mean.
All the funk.
That's, that's very nice because it's in the downtown area too.
So, yeah, right next door with.
I don't, I don't know the facility. I've never been in it, but, I mean, I'm just saying.
Right, so if that one's available, I don't know how to get ahold of that person, look in that facility. Potential.
Well, let's, let's at least look at this one.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Like you said, it's exciting for me because there's room with all the wire robbers, that they've wired everything there already and in need of a new vehicle maintenance. It could be a possibility, but we'll look at it. Okay, number nineteen. Proven agreement between Turnbull County Board of Commissioners, Sheriff Monroe and Lexipool to purchase annual law enforcement policy and procedure manual and daily training bulletin for Turnbull County Sheriff's for an appropriated amount. One-time fee is thirty-two thousand five forty-two from March to December, paid out of that fund. The annual fee for service starting on January one, twenty-twenty-five will be twenty thousand eight fifty-three. Agreement's been reviewed by the prosecutor's office. Uh, Major?
Yes. Major Tony Bonway, of Turnbull County Sheriff's Office. Uh, currently our policy is a bunch of Microsoft Word documents, uh, and it's saved in a PDF file, which is about four hundred and thirteen pages of PDF. So that makes it hard to maintain and store and making any changes, if there's any changes in law, changes in policy, Ohio law, federal law, that means we have to edit that PDF and then send that PDF out to all of our employees. So Lexipool creates and maintains policies all, uh, all digital. It's on a computer, get it on your cell phone. Um, nice thing about it, it tracks changes. So if a policy is changed, actually save the old policy and use the current policy. That way if there's any record request for a cer- for a certain time, you can pull up the actual policy, uh, when that incident occurred or when that record request is, you know, cases for that request. Um, it keeps everything, our compliance also, how collaborative, how collaborative is important for us to get any grant funding for the Sheriff's Office such as body chem grant. Uh, we just paid a thousand dollars, uh, body chem grant, which awaits for the actual award, but we wouldn't have that if we weren't Ohio collaborative. Um, and again, making us Ohio collaborative with people's policy. Um, it keeps everything, so we're compliant, also, how collaborative, how collaborative is important for us to get any grant funding for the sheriff's office, such as body chemogran, uh, we just, eight thousand dollars, uh, body chemogran, which awaits for the actual award, but we wouldn't have that if we weren't Ohio collaborative, um, and again, making us Ohio collaborative with policy. Um, also with Lexipool, real quick, is it also, uh, sends out weekly scenario-based training. Right now, we don't have anything like that for our deputies, so Lexipool will send out an email to a supervisor, uh, with multiple, uh, types of scenario-based trainings, we can choose how many, you know, one, two, three, however many we want, and send them out to the deputies, and give them a week to complete that scenario-based training. Video, PowerPoint, uh, these tasks at the end, but also keeps records for use of force training for us, talent's training, keeps us, uh, speed with any type of law, so, I'm pretty excited about it, uh, and, uh, it's gonna be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Major.
All right. All right, we'll do, uh, twenty, establish the renaming of Fund Three-O-four, the Enterprise Bond Retirement Fund for use by Chumby County Sanitary Engineers Department, rename funds to be used for retirement of enterprise bonds.
Commissioner, Bob Meyer, Enos Sanitary Engineers, um, we're taking an old enterprise debt retirement fund, and we're renaming it, so I no longer will make transfers to the Auditor's General Fund, Bond Retirement Fund, so we'll do it all as an enterprise.
Chris Cusseric, Auditor's Office, this is per recommendation of the, um, Auditor of State's office, in our management letter, uh, last year, and this, well, for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, uh, we had noncompliance citations with transferings between business-type activity and government-type activity, which we've been paying about three-oh, which is government-type, and they did not care for that, so they did request us to establish an enterprise fund to account for that activity.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner, we're gonna, we're gonna pause on twenty and skip twenty-one for a second.
Okay.
Um, one of their show wanted to bring up, while they were waiting here, I think that's why they're here today, is we had a, um, uh, there's been a lot of talk about Trumbull Memorial Hospital, and the future of Stewart, uh, the Stewart Group there. Nationwide, if people, um, read the papers, and see national news, they see that there are some lawsuits, there are some bankruptcies, they're based out of Massachusetts, they own hospitals throughout the country, and they've just closed some hospitals in Texas, they're closing some hospitals in Massachusetts, and financially, it doesn't look good, uh, for the viability of that hospital. So there's been a lot of rumor here in the community about what's happening, um, and what's happening locally with our bills. Um, there was a meeting, well, there's been many meetings orchestrated, but there was a meeting last week with the chamber, with some businessmen through the Mahoning Valley and Trumbull County, with, um, some hospital personnel and just, just other people on, hey, you know, what, what do we do here? What's gonna happen? Let's have a plan. Uh, the mayor sat in the meeting, I was an invited guest to be at that meeting also, it was last week, and the, the community leaders that were there, um, basically identified the issues, there was a lawyer there who studies hospital mergers, um, has experience in that, and he said, uh, Trumbull Memorial made money last year, you know, they made almost ten million dollars profit, um, but our profits were taken and given away to other areas where they were failing, so they didn't reinvest in our hospital, and there were some bills that went unpaid, um, which make our hospital look like it's sinking. Um, the hospital's a viable entity in this community, and having two hospitals with a hundred and ninety thousand people is a necessary thing for our community, so we cannot lose a hospital, we can't go down to one hospital town, if we do, it'll drag the other hospital down with all of the, uh, clientele, all the patients, uh, I personally went to the hospital a couple of weeks ago for pneumonia, I was like number sixty in line at St. Joe's, I was there for eight hours, it was a zoo, there weren't even enough seats in the waiting room for people. So people are ready, the rumors are starting, employees are spreading rumors, are we gonna get paid, are we not? Should we look for another job? That's spreading to the community, and it's kinda becoming like a cancer. The one thing that was established by the group that we're with last week, including the mayor and the business community, was we need a community-based hospital, someone that cares about Trumbull County, somebody that wants to be here and be part of us, not a corporate conglomerate. They've tried that a few times with Form, they tried it with Stewart, and so the consensus, uh, uh, what, what I wanted to talk to you about today was, you know, we can't do anything as commissioners to solve this problem, the city of Warren can't do anything by themselves to solve the problem, it's gonna take business people in the community to step forward, and if there is a nonprofit being formed that is trying to get control of the hospital, building itself, and if they do that, then it's easier to find another provider, Cleveland Clinic, or University Health, or, or one of the other nonprofits that are out there. So the business community's gonna be working in that direction, and they'll have some press releases soon, as far as, you know, what they can do there. They're still meeting and having ideas and, and in the research and inventory phase, but what came out of the meeting to me was, they wanted me to address the board, us, to get a consensus between the majority of the board, that between us and Warren City, to do a joint press conference, joint press statement, that we are in support of maintaining a hospital at that premises, that we understand the need for it, that we will do everything we can in our position, um, through letters of support, through anything that we can do to help maintain, or help make sure that we have, we, because we are still a two-hospital entity, and we also need to spread the news, the hospital is fully functioning right now, they are accepting patients, you can go in there and get surgery, you can go in the emergency room, you can go in there, uh, for mental health treatment still, there's been some rumors out there that you can't, and you're gonna be turned away, and this isn't happening. Yes, they are having some financial difficulties and supply chain things now because of the bills, but they are still providing a service to the community, so that's something that we need to let the community know, if, you, if you don't feel good, if you, if that's where you wanna go, if that's your place, go, you know, they will take care of you, they still have the same doctors, they still have the best doctors in the world there, they still have the best nurses and receptionists and people to treat you, um, your service is not gonna fail, because it's our local people, you know, these aren't strangers that are serving you, it's your community members, your neighbors, they're taking care of you. It's one of them things where we gotta support local in a sense, too, so by us bailing and, and the rumor mill there, we're hurting our own community, and we're hurting these jobs, there's a thousand people that work there, and the goal of the business community, the goal of myself, and, and hopefully you, and the mayor, is to keep those thousand jobs right there at that hospital, come up with a more community-based system that's gonna serve us like it back in the day when we had a war in general, and we had a, a, a Trumbull Memorial, and people went there because it was a community hospital that they, was part of who they were when they grew up, they were born there, they die there, you know, they get their treatment there, so, uh, I'm asking you at this time, I guess, to help me draft this.
Absolutely.
Statement, uh, that we'll do a joint statement with Mayor Franklin and the city of Warren, um, at least that part of it, to get to the community that we're fighting to keep the, keep a community-based hospital here, um, it isn't so much that Stewart is gonna bail on us, they're, they've got a bridge loan from their people, they're, they're here, now we need to take forth, and basically, we, we're the ones saying, we can do better than, than Stewart, and we're gonna do better, so if Stewart wants to go, if they think it's financially feasible for them to go, we can let them go as a community, but we're gonna replace them with something better for our, for our citizens, you know, we're not just gonna replace them with another corporate conglomerate, we're not just gonna patch something in there, so.
I, I think with how healthcare is now, too, especially, a lot of these for-profit hospitals are, are going by the wayside, a lot, the majority of them are nonprofits now, like Mercy is, and, um, you know, what, not only for the care of the, of the people that live in this community, but for, as you mentioned, economic development and for the jobs that, that, uh, is, is a huge blow, uh, if anything were to happen there. One of the things I think we could do is, is utilize our port authority in this, uh.
They were there, they were part of the meeting.
If there, if there is some sort of, um, you know, Stewart is looking to, to, to get out of the business and to, and I know that they've closed, uh, hospitals nationwide, uh, especially in Texas, I, I was aware of that, um, and in their home base in Massachusetts, but, uh, maybe, maybe the port authority could act as sort of the facilitator to bring in some of these nonprofits, uh, to the table, nonprofit hospitals that would be interested in taking over, if it comes to that, if it comes to that, but I think, uh, utilizing them and the resources that they have, you know, they're, they're a huge economic arm for us, as far as being able to lend and, and, uh, borrow and purchase, uh, we need to utilize them, and they need to be at the table, I think, so.
Well, this is all lies right now, there's a group that owns the hospital called Medical Properties Trust, and, and the building's valued at, you know, big money, I mean, you're talking, um, multimillion dollars, sort of building.
Sure, sure.
But that building is worthless to them if they don't have a hospital there.
Right.
So, uh, it, the negotiations are all gonna be with this group, and there are some outside people, um, that deal in this type of stuff, that come in and broker deals with us.
Mm-hmm.
That find a nice, easy exit solution for people that have big, huge hospitals that, that aren't gonna have a provider. MPT is tied in with Stewart nationwide, so if they go, Stewart goes, if Stewart goes, they go, they're basically the landlord for Stewart in a lot of ways, you know, so if we can acquire in what the community's looking at, if we can have a local nonprofit of business, community leaders, take the helm of running the building, it'll be so much easier to find a provider to come in and service our, our citizens, but we want a local flair to it, we want a local board, we don't want another Massachusetts-based company.
No.
Making the decisions for our local people, we want it to be community-based, and we have some of the brightest minds in the world that live in the Mahoning Valley, you know, we've got billionaires that live here, we've got multimillionaires that live here, we've got people that believe in the, in the Mahoning Valley.
Absolutely.
And are born and raised in Trumbull County, and were born at that hospital, and wanna see that hospital succeed, and they've stepped up now, and they've stepped up with the Chamber of Commerce, they've stepped up with the Port Authority, um, and they've realized, hey, we're not gonna sit back and let something happen to us, we're gonna drive this thing, we're not gonna be in the passenger seat, and there are some physicians that are meeting also, doing their own thing, the goal is to bring them all together under one umbrella, and let's put our community together and take back our hospital, and take back our community, and provide the best service we can for our citizens.
I know we talked about any interruption in service or surgeries or anything that's happening as far as payroll with Stewart, is, in those conversations, is there a timeline in place, or is this?
Yeah, there's, there's things going on right now, we know that Stewart's gonna be there for at least the next six months, that they have enough funding to, to do six months of one hundred percent pure service for the citizens, um, we, we, it, it's kinda like a baseball analogy, you know, you, we got the players, we got the coaches, they're, they're, that's all there, we got a winning team. If they change ownership, and they sell from one owner to another, that really doesn't affect the players, it really doesn't affect the fans, you know, if, if you're a, a Washington Commanders fan, or whatever it is, your owner just changed, you don't go and root for a different team, you still stick with your team, we wanna stick with that hospital, and we want our community members to stick with that hospital, we wanna keep the team we have, we want the same nurses, same doctors, same surgeons, same people that work there, the same specialists, same rehab people, we want them all there, we want the team to stay intact, so the biggest goal is to bring it back community-oriented, keep the same teams, you're gonna get the same treatment, and, but if anything, get them better supplies, get them better, you know, a fresh coat of paint when you go in the lobby, I mean, there's things there that these groups form, and Stewart will come in, and the lobby looks the same as it did forty years ago, you know, there's, there's things you need to do to freshen things up, to give people what they deserve, and get that, just that feeling of, you know, that we care, and that's something where we do care about our community, um, I'm, I'm really hopeful with this, and I, I really think us leading the charge, at least, from the fan side of things, rooting them on, is gonna be helpful.
Yeah.
In a lot of ways, and I, and I think we have the smart enough people to do it, you know, I, I, I put all my faith in the business community we have, and the economic development teams we have in the county, that this is something that came up, and I think they're gonna deal with it, and I think we're gonna see how professional they are, and in the long run, we're gonna have two great hospitals here providing service for our citizens, good competition, and people are, it's gonna make them both up their game, and we're gonna get the best service we can. They're not gonna have to go to Cleveland, they're not gonna have to go to Pittsburgh for better service.
Right, and I don't doubt that we're gonna find a provider if that's the case, that, that, uh, Stewart leaves.
They say it's a winning formula, we, it's a hospital that makes money, and we, we know, we know today, we have less insured people in this county than we will tomorrow, we know with Kimberly-Clark, we know with these other businesses in Lordstown, we are gonna have good-paying jobs here with good insurance, so why wouldn't I, if, why wouldn't someone take over a hospital that's already profitable, that's only gonna be more profitable in the future?
Agreed. I, what I worry about is interruption in service, if there is, you know, I, and that's where I think, um, a six-month forecast is, is beneficial, but if you're scheduling surgeries, and that all changes, you know, you, you, seven months down the road, you go to surgery, and that all changes, we don't wanna have, we gotta be proactive, not.
And that's where I gotta give accolades to the Stewart management team here locally, they have been communicating with us extremely well, they are transparent with what's going on, they're fighting to stay in this community, they're fighting to give the best service, and they, they've given some guarantees of when they got this money, we're gonna be here, don't worry about surgeries next month, two months, four months, six months down the road, maybe, we'll talk later, but as of right now, they are doing everything they can to facilitate the best service for the people we have in our community. They're not bailing on, they're doing their job every day like they're gonna do it for the rest of their lives in this community.
Well.
And I commend them for that.
And, and hopefully that's the case, and if there is an interruption in service, and there is, you know, I hate to say it, but if Stewart walks away, uh, we have to be ready, and I still think the port authority is viable option here.
They are.
Uh, to take it over into.
They're one tool in the toolbox, like you said, they were at the meeting the other day, they're a tool in the toolbox, but there's, uh, you know.
I mean, there's no bigger pressing.
Think of a hundred million dollar operation as a big deal.
Well, absolutely.
You know, people, so.
But thi- but think of the, the economic impact that it has on the, on the valley, I don't think there's anything more pressing that we'd need them for than that.
Right, they are one of our biggest employers in the whole county, I mean, you're talking thousands of people work there.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And, and you're not just talking there, you're talking Hillside Rehab, you're talking the Elm Road, um, they, they even have a.
They even have a Stewart, um, Trumbull Memorial thing in Austin Town. Yeah.
You know, that affects Mahoning County, and then you got Sharon Regional, right across the border, and this is one whole big package deal, they're looking at it as a package in this region, so we, we need to do everything we can to save this whole region, and.
Yeah.
And that's something that, uh, like you said, like they said, if you're an investor, if you're one of the people in the hospital business, you're just licking your lips right now, and there are some people hoping that it fails, so they're coming to buy cheap, and there will be a provider.
Right.
But we wanna steer who goes to it, we don't want it to be something that goes on the market cheap, and whoever gets it, gets it.
Right.
We wanna make sure that our local community leaders have a chance to choose who's gonna provide the best service for our residents, whether it be, like you said, a Cleveland Clinic, the UH, uh, whatever group from, there's nonprofits all over the place that buy hospitals, Mercy happens to be the biggest, but there's, there's other ones out there that will want to come here, and, and if we have local leadership calling the shots, we're golden, you know, then we know we're taken care of, we're not just gonna be utilized for our dollars.
And I think, you know, private investment is private investment, but at the same time, we have a chance to sort of steer and, um, broker this, if, if, if indeed Stewart, uh, does pack up and leave, I mean, the, the port authority and the chamber are, are huge, uh, resources that we can use in order to make that happen.
And, and, and a lot of those talks are going on right now, and that's way above my level of expertise, or yours, uh, there are professionals in healthcare dealing with this, what, what we can do, like you said, as commissioners, is just offer support, encourage people to hang in there, and dispel the rumors that are out there.
Yeah.
We are gonna have a hospital there, and it is gonna be good service, and it's gonna be better service than what we have now eventually.
No doubt.
Uh, the service is bad now, but we, we can know with the community aspect, too, it's gonna be better.
I mean, i- in a way, if Stewart were to, 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 uh, leave, I mean, there, there are a number of nonprofit hospitals that we could look at, that, that, uh, could fill those shoes, uh, that are willing to take on something like that, I mean, because.
Well, we need to get, acquire, we need to acquire ownership of the building somehow locally, or somebody calling the shots, so we get to pick who goes there, and not just the lowest bidder, highest bidder, or whatever we want.
And that's where the port authority comes in.
We want the best service, and they're on it. I feel comfortable in that, so there'll be more to come from that, and then they'll be keeping us briefed as they move on, the next couple of weeks are gonna be crucial, and I know they have other meetings planned, um, they said I was fortunate to be part of the one, and what they asked of us is a letter of support, and that's why I'm conveying it to you publicly here in this meeting, to ask you.
Of course.
To join me, and, and let's craft a letter with the mayor, uh, of a letter of support for the hospital being there.
We will do that, and I think it's best that one commissioner sits in on those meetings anyway, because.
Right.
Don't try and law violations, so.
And that's, that's why I'm bringing a few today, in this format, and that's why, you didn't even know I was there last, the last week when I met with them, it was just one of them things that, to protect the integrity of the, of everything, and, and to stay, um, as open as I can with you now, that's why I'm bringing up here today, you're caught up in speed on what I know.
Well, and, and there's been, as you said, rumors, and I've talked to the chamber, and talked to the port authority along the way, too, um, just in my own conversations, and our mental health and recovery board is worried about, you know, the behavioral health side of this, uh, and, and, and how that's gonna affect everything, so there are a lot of moving parts to this, uh, but as you said, I'm confident that if we, if we, if, if community-based taking over that building, you, you can bring in providers like the Cleveland Clinic, university hospitals, that, uh, the, the, the possibilities are there.
It affects us with the morgue, April is tied in with mental health stuff here, she's a wonderful asset we have in Trumbull County.
Absolutely.
She is in on these talks also, she is up to, I mean, she's, there's probably nobody more up to date than she is right now on what's going on.
Yeah.
And she knows before the people at Stewart know sometimes, I think, so, um, it's good to have her on our team.
Yeah.
And with the team that we have assembled, the, the economic leaders we have in the valley here, I, I have full confidence this is gonna happen.
So I guess, to dispel any, anything else, we're, we're gonna work as hard as we possibly can, the city of Warren, Chumby County Commissioners, state representatives, everybody, our economic development teams.
Correct.
To make sure that that hospital stays viable.
Right, and this is. Right. And this is nothing against Mercy or St. Joe's. You know, we want them to succeed also, but we know we need to be a two coun, a two hospital county. And we want them both to succeed. And there's enough business here for both to do that.
Absolutely.
And our competition, if we're Trumbull County people, isn't this. Our competition is Southwoods and, and Sanes Boardman and the, uh, UH GOGA and Ravenna. That's where people are going if they don't go here.
Yeah.
So I wanna keep the dollars here and keep the jobs here in our county.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that update.
More to come. And, uh, I will help draft
Yeah.
a letter with the mayor and then, uh, and have the, bring it to the board to hopefully sign on with me soon.
Sounds good.
Okay, let's go to number twenty-one. Authorize the settlement agreement, the case of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners versus Matt Morgan, the Chicken Coop, Finley Lake. This was a, a situation where they did more work than they were supposed to without permission, but it provided a service. No?
No.
Not that one?
Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. This is the one that we went into executive session a couple of weeks ago. We wanted to discuss this with you and get back to, um, the other party, just to know that this is the number we're going to settle on. But this was out in Hubbard Township. We had a, uh, brain layer connecting in a household up on State Route Seven, and they did major damage to the main line when they did that.
Gotcha.
And they didn't have the capability to repair it. It was a deep sewer. And so we had to bring in our contractors. And, um, we tried to just get them to, uh, pay the amount that we asked for all the repairs, and they were hesitant to do that. So, uh, Matt Blair, who's due capacity of, uh, um, for bill collecting, he sued them in, uh, for a common plea. And we were asking for a total of twenty-five thousand, one oh seven sixty-five. And we are, as we, uh, briefed you on this in the executive session, we are willing to settle with them at a thirty-one thousand dollars total.
Very good. And that was a good deal that he made. It was, and we're getting paid and we all move forward.
Yes.
Okay. Number twenty-two, to approve contract amendment. And, and the reason, uh, we went into an executive session was there were legal things with this.
Mm-hmm.
We got beat up over it last week. Why didn't we have this in advance? We don't know what we can and can't say. It's legal stuff that we need to be educated by the attorney on what we can and can't say with this stuff. That's something that is for executive session and not for us to have in advance that we could disseminate mistakenly to the wrong people. Uh, so, uh, we did everything correctly, I believe.
If we would've put this on and the other party isn't acceptable to this, then it would've been a waste of time.
Correct. Correct.
So, so that's why we had to do it this way.
Um, so that was the, basically the main reason for executive sessions or things like this that need to be kept private until they're not.
Not to mention if we'd have received that information, not to be technical, but if we'd have received that information that, that we received in executive session prior to executive session, that would've been a public document, and you can't discuss pending litigation, you know, that, it would've just, that, they, they went about it the right way.
They did. I agree. Now that we know what it is, we can disclose what it is. We done, you know, we got accused of
Yeah, I know.
nefarious stuff for no reason. Twenty-two, to approve contract amendment number one to the engineering agreement with Kleinfelter, Inc., formerly known as Pogomeyer Design Group for the Almonds wastewater treatment plant replacement project, County Project Nine S twenty. Amendment number one is for the reduction of ten thousand three sixty-four, providing the total contract amount to fifty-two one thirty-five. Amendment number one is necessary to non-perform the construction observer task concluded in the construction administration services and additional design and bidding services outlined in the attached contract amendment number one. I clear that up in three seconds.
All right, yeah, commissioners, this is the almond plant, and we are just going to do the, uh, construction administration inspection on our own. So we're gonna have our own people out there watching the contractor. And originally Pogomeyer, well, now it's Kleinfelter, at a cost of fifteen thousand five hundred for that. Since our, our people are going to do that, we're actually non-performing that. But they did have some additional costs regarding the, um, design, and we had to bid this thing out twice. So you should take the fifteen thousand five hundred minus the other extra costs that we incurred, and the difference ends up being a net reduction of this ten thousand three sixty-four seventy-three.
That'll be saved by doing it ourselves.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, twenty-three. Approve the attached sick, sick and vacation leave conversion plan for non-barg, non-bargaining unit employees of departments listed January one, December thirty-one. The vacation cash-in will be limited to eighty hours max for this year. The sick leave cash-in will be forty. The plan is in compliance with ORC Section one forty-five oh one and Ohio Administrative Code one forty-five one twenty-six. And sub B is submitted to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System for acceptance prior to March thirty-one deadline. So this is gonna cover the commissioners, the treasurer, the auditor, the coroner, the prosecutor, sheriff, building inspection, maintenance, dog kennel, homeland security, office of elderly affairs, human resources, sanitary engineers, planning commission, data processing, uh, CSEA, Department of Job and Family Services, senior levy administrator, transit administrator, nine-one-one center, clerk records, and recorders. These are non-bargaining unit employees. They can cash in at the end of the year, eighty hours of vacation, forty hours of sick leave, uh, for payment. And number twenty-four, approve sick and vacation leave conversion plan for non-union members of the court of common pleas, domestic relations, probate court, central district court, and eastern district court. And what are the hours there? It doesn't say it on there.
Um, it's attached with the plan. Uh, the courts are at a hundred sick and a hundred and eighty vacation.
The courts, and the courts do their thing as we know.
They could write an order yet.
We can't bring them in compliance with what we do, although we can encourage it, but they do their own thing. Approve sick and vacation leave conversion plan for members of OPBA of the Trumbull County nine-one-one center. And what is that amount?
So that is a bargaining unit, um, and the OPBA is currently at eighty sick, one hundred and eighty vacation. And that's included with your, uh, packet. It's actually, like, the actual, uh, plan. It's included with your packet.
Okay.
So they're at eighty sick, one twenty vacation, and that's bargained. So that's something that was bargained before I came. Um, nothing we can do about that. But we are trying to, at the bargaining.
Moving in the direction of eighty forty for everybody ultimately. To approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for AFSME, local thirty-one ninety-six employees of Trumbull County Auditor's Office.
So they're at eighty sick and one hundred and eighty vacation. Uh, also bargaining, done before me. We'll work on it, is all I can say.
The Trumbull County Recorder's Office, AFSME Union.
They are at one hundred sick. So, I'm sorry, you are at twenty-four ninety, oh, thirty-eight oh eight A?
Yeah, number twenty-seven.
Kipped around a little bit. I'm sorry. Okay, thirty-eight oh eight A is also at eighty sick and one hundred and eighty vacation.
Okay.
Also, again, another bargaining unit that I can't, we can't do anything about that at the time.
Twenty-eight, sick and leave vacation conversion plan for AFSME twenty-four ninety-three.
AFSME twenty-four ninety-three is our biggest, uh, union, and they're at a hundred sick and a hundred and eighty vacation. And we have not yet hit that bargaining table as of yet, but we will be going into there, uh, shortly.
Okay. OPBA Sheriff's Department.
Uh, they are all at one hundred and twenty-six and two hundred and forty vacation.
Okay. Number thirty, approve the sick and vacation leave conversion plan for bargaining employees of Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, AFSME four fifty-eight.
They are at eighty sick, one hundred and twenty vacation, and we will be going into bargaining for them soon.
Okay. They got a lot of employees in that one also?
A hundred and fifty roughly.
Okay.
I mean, John, John could speak to that better than I could, but yes, roughly a hundred and fifty.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good that they've come down. Uh, number thirty-one, approve the attached sick and vacation leave conversion plan for bargaining employees of Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, CSEA, thirty-eight oh eight.
Uh, they're at eighty sick, one hundred and sixty vacation. We're currently at the bargaining table for them. That won't change this round. We'll have to wait until, you know, next time.
Right. I don't see Board of Elections.
Uh, they're not on here. They have their own boards. They did just submit it to us after a meeting with their, um, so it was included with the packet that I sent you guys. So you don't have Board of Elections on here. You don't have the Metro Parks. You don't have Board of Health, uh, Engineers Office, or Veterans. Uh, Board of Elections, they were pending their board review. They did just submit it to me, so it'll go on next week. Um.
What is it?
One hundred sick, one hundred and eighty vacation.
So they're going against the grain, even though we fund them, they're, they're not complying with where we wanted them to be?
That's, I'm gonna leave that to the board discretion, because last time I got my hands slapped, and all I can tell you is what they're submitting, it is general fund. That's all I can say. So.
They're the only ones in the general fund that are doing that much?
No, no.
All these?
All these are general funds.
Oh, so.
Except, yeah. So Board of Elections is paid one hundred percent on a general fund. Metro Parks is paid out of general fund. Board of Health, uh, they're actually on their own. Yeah, so Board of Health is on their own. Uh, the Engineers Office is on their own, but they are actually complying. They just got us ours, uh, yesterday in our eighty forty. So everybody is kinda marching along.
Who was that?
Uh, Engineers.
Great.
Randy Smith, yeah. So thank you for that, if you're listening. I really appreciate that.
What about the, what about Metro Parks?
I have no clue what they're going for yet. They haven't submitted that to me yet. And Veterans is, uh, at the full max, one twenty, two forty, so.
Wow. You talk to her about that. That's, that's.
That's up to you guys. I do.
Public funds that are being paid out of the week. I mean, that's a huge chunk of money we've paid at the end of the year.
Again, I'm cool not to get into people's budgets, so I'm just gonna back out and tell you where we're at. But I will say something, and, and, and this is the best way I can put it to you, in fact.
Well, we set budgets, and if we pay all that money out at the end of the year, that's actually coming
Yes.
out of general fund, and we have to set the budget, we could adapt things to it.
All they can do is give you the.
Christie Auditor's Office, uh, the veterans get a mandated share of the, uh, general fund valuation, and they're not anywhere near what it, they should, could get.
Okay.
From the general fund just spent by. Yeah, they, they could
She is correct.
Get a lot more money.
So they make up the difference in a lot of this.
I.
Somewhat.
I'm not well-versed enough on their budget.
I think.
I just know they're mandated to, uh, half the mill of the general, or of the county's valuations, and it is a large dollar amount, and they don't hit that budget-wise.
Alex, how often do you, does HR monitor their vacation leaving stuff?
I.
To make sure people aren't
They don't.
Leaving early, flexing time, doing things, and cashing all their vacation at the end of the year.
They don't include me on anything. I have, I have no access. They have their own board. They, they do as they do. Uh, all I do is, uh, since I've come on board, I've tried to really streamline processes and procedures, and I share with them everything that I share with everybody else in this room. Um.
Administratively, they have their own.
They have their own board. They can do what they want.
Right.
Marissa just texted me. Uh, she said that, uh, she had listened to this recently, and they could get five hundred thousand more in the general fund than what they have, uh, in the budget, so.
Um, the only thing I will say, and, and this is not against veterans, this is just in general. Um, you do see a trend, and I wanna thank everybody. You see actual elected officials who hit general fund at the eighty forty. I mean, that's, to me, that's a very big deal, that elected officials are coming on board. We have the recorder under there. We have the treasurer. Uh, we have multiple, the auditor, you know, um, the sheriff's office. So I think that's really, that speaks magnitude to the amount of teamwork and effort put forth. Yeah.
Those are non-bargaining you're talking about?
Correct. Yeah, we have some outliers, but again, you know, maybe their budgets are a little bit different, and I'm not gonna keep getting my hands slapped for just trying to do my job, so that's here nor there. Uh, you guys make the decisions. You vote on it. You approve it. It is what it is.
I think we made tremendous strides.
We have.
Um, in my time here, when I first started, it was one eighty, two forty across the board almost. We've, we've chipped away, and we've been the leader in this with the eighty forty, and some have followed suit, some haven't.
Yeah.
But they're making
But we're making, we're making strides.
strides, because a lot of these were, were that high sometimes. So I think we've chipped away at it. We need to continue to do that. Our goal is to get to, everybody be on the same, uh, playing field here.
I think.
And I think we can do that. We're, we're just gonna buy it.
Yeah, I think it just takes time. I, I do think one thing, that hopefully the board will see the way that I kind of put the plans together. You can see that we have a lot of different plans. This is not by any means fun, and this is not the way that we wanna continue, I think. And talking to Bill D'Anzo, I don't wanna put you on the spot, back in the day, and I, we had two plans for the whole county. I mean, what happened was the conversion became a bargaining tool.
Yeah.
I don't like that. Um, again, at the time, we weren't able to give increases in wages, so.
This is prior to all of us.
Right. So that's kinda how, I wanna make sure you have the history. Prior to all of us, the county had been on wage freezes. With that being said, the only thing they could offer at the negotiation table was additional conversion time and other benefits as well, right? Additional days off, uh, per pickup, which we've gotten rid of. So what we saw was, in lieu of wages, a lot of this kind of got a little bit, all right, but a little bit out of control. Um, and everybody, we weren't consistent in HR, right? We weren't saying, no, this is the goal that we've been given. This is where we're headed to. We're trying to kinda rein that back in now, but again, we also have to remember, this wasn't move wages for a seven-year wage freeze. So we're gonna be able, we're gonna have to, when we go into negotiation tables, be able to give to get. That's where we're stuck right now.
That's the thing, is people say, well, what, how are you gonna take this, you know, why don't you just take it away at the bargaining table? Well,
Yeah.
elective bargaining, you, is give and take.
That's right.
If we give you this, they're gonna want something else.
That's right.
So we're gonna either have to increase wages. I mean, in the long run, it'll work, and you're, you're, you're getting these, um, sort of hidden benefits out of there, which is not what we want. We wanna be transparent.
Right.
Um, so, so I think we've made good strides in order to do that. But again, there's concessions when you do that in a bargaining unit. You can't just say, we're taking this. Well.
And he throws a red flag up to me that somebody is cashing in six weeks' vacation. I mean, what are they doing? I mean, are they never leaving the office, or are they leaving the office at other times and, and saving the vacation? And it just throws up a flag. You gotta use it. I, I would use it. Um, there's days that we, we take office commissioners, we're on that same thing, but if we have employees here, people need a break. They need vacations. They need to get away. And if you're not taking a vacation, you gotta worry about, you know, the men, mental health aspects and everything else that goes with it.
Yeah.
But if there's one way to cheat the system, it would be, you know, save your vacation in sick days and cash them in at the end, and, but still take your time. And that's what we have to just be alerting on and watchful for, that people don't just double-dip and take the time and then not cash in the vacation 'cause they're in an outlying area, or nobody would ever know, or it's a Friday and they kick loose early and, and do whatever. You know, we just, just gotta be mindful of that.
Mm-hmm.
Not that it happens a lot, but this creates a situation where it could happen if someone wants to save that much time, if they like that big check at Christmas.
Well, we urge our HR director to, to these remaining bargaining units, when you go into there, uh, we need to be, uh, very clear that
Yeah.
we're, we're trying to reduce that. And I know that's gonna take a give and take, but, um, but let, let's go in there with that mindset.
And I think too, if there's one thing that I could, um, stress, and John has done a fina, a fabulous job, uh, also working with Clemens Nelson. I gave Clemens Nelson our marching orders, so they understand from me, from an HR director's perspective, this is where we're trying to go. Um, but I do need every single, I, I am basically, at this point, begging every single person who, you know, you think, oh, I don't necessarily need HR at the table. There's things that we can help you facilitate, so please make sure you ask for input, uh, before you get to a place where you're like, I'm already a fact-finding, and, you know, we already bargained this, this, and this. So a thank you to John. He's really the first, um, that we started off with CSEA, and we've been very vocal about what we're looking for to accomplish as far as, from the employer's standpoint. And the sheriff's office, I came in late, uh, I came in late. Uh, they whipped me in a band, which I, is fine. Um, but I would like to get a place where we're more proactive versus retroactive.
Number thirty-two. Authorized payment of fifty-one thousand five ninety-four to East Gate Regional Council Government's dues for the county year twenty twenty-four. Local dues required to match federal and state funds at various ra, ratios for East Gate Regional Council Government's different funding programs. And this fifty-one thousand is a mixture of seventeen from the county commissioners, seventeen credit for the engineer, and seventeen for sanitary engineer, um, for the services they provide. So just like we joined Chamber of Commerce or Vision, Valley Vision twenty fifty, which are definitely necessary economic-driven, um, membership. Thirty-three, to appoint Scott Leland as AP area inspector for Trumbull County for year twenty twenty-four. It'll be compensated the hourly rate of twelve bucks, not to exceed fifteen hundred, and reimburse for mileage at the IRS standard rate of sixty-seven point five cents per mile. And we will notify the, uh, Department of Ag of Mr. Leland's appointment. He's replacing a longtime guy who, um,
Mr. Perrin.
Didn't, didn't wanna do it anymore or moved on.
Yeah, he submitted, uh, Alex Stephen Johnson Bush, who's the research director. He had let Lisa know that we, he was no longer interested in this position. Um, we wish him all the best, and he wants to enjoy his life, and we totally understand that.
And I learned an awful lot about this, like, like, what, what are we gonna be? Well.
No, it's a very, um.
Bee people out there. They trade bees. They sell bees. They do things. And this guy's job is basically go out there and make sure they're not
The hives are healthy.
Yeah, and they're not selling bees or handling bees that have unhealthy hives, that can kill off all the other bees.
That's good. Yeah.
So it is, uh, for fertilization of plants, for fertilization of flora and fauna throughout the state. Uh, this is kind of an essential job with ODA that there's guys out there looking for this, because there are bee hives that fail, and there are ones that they need to stop them from knowing what they're doing before they infect the whole community.
So I just wanna make sure, um, to note this, so for anybody listening, uh, it's actually fifteen dollars an hour, so Lisa's gonna change that. Uh, the do not exceed is still fifteen hundred for the year, for the season. Uh, remember, this is a seasonal part-time job. The season starts April first and runs through October thirty-first. Uh, we did not, uh, what we did was we went out to, just so we're very clear, uh, I emailed apiary@agri.ohio.gov asking them for a list of qualified or asking or asking them to help us, um, send out this job description for this Apiary. I also emailed Trumbull County Beekeeper, or Trumbull Beekeepers, uh, and that's actually how, uh, Mr. Leland, I believe, he said he used to be associated with the Beekeepers, uh, he was the President of the Beekeepers for quite some time. So, that is how we found Mr. Leland. And again, he is the only person who expressed any sort of interest in Trumbull County. So, there is no other person who expressed any interest, and we're thankful that he did express interest, otherwise, we would've had to go another route.
He does have a big display, I remember, at the fair also.
Thank you.
He's the bee guy at the fair, so he is active in the community, so he'll be a good asset that way. He's already public friendly, and, uh, wish him luck. Don't get stung. Number thirty-four. Notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested on liquor permit. LG and G, uh, State Line Supermarket, to State Line Supermarket, GOAG. And then thirty-five, enter executive session, come back from executive session, and then deal with the personnel action regarding three, or regarding, uh, sanitary engineers employed. That closes out everything we have for the agenda for tomorrow. And open it up to our Department Heads, we have a lot of people here, so say what you have to say.
Um, I'll start, if you're ready, Chrislyn, Tim, we already leave though. All right, uh, Commissioners, um, there's been a, again, things that HR has slipped into this great- Oh, you had your hand wriggly, I'm like, what?
No, no.
Do you have a question? Um, things that we're trying to, uh, make processes better, and that's something that HR is here for, to help with that as well. With that being said, there's been a lot of confusion, um, about submitting agenda items, how to submit them properly. Some, some departments do great, some Commissioners don't even follow their own rules. Not, not anybody here per se. But with that being said, we need to talk about and streamline what we're doing. Um, there's always conversations about, was there a prosecutor's opinion attached? Was the attachment there, were they not? I mean, we debate this every other week, and it's just completely abhorrent. So, what we have put together, thank you to Tim, thank you to Lisa, thank you to Chrislyn, thank you to everybody, is we're trying to streamline processes and make life easier here and for the county. So, instead of sending, uh, to the BOC, uh, what Chrislyn and everybody in IT has helped us create is an actual platform, uh, that every Department Head has access to through SharePoint, every Department Head and every entity even outside, if you're just trying to submit agenda items, then you're just from the public, that's okay too. Um, everything is the same, nothing has changed. The submission is still Thursday by end of day at twelve thirty. Um, but what this does is, this gives Lisa, um, a way to convert the items that you put in straight over to the agenda. It saves her, I can't even tell you how invaluable this will be when we actually go live with this. Uh, she'll still have to tweak it, and remember, this is only as good as what a Department Head or Office or whoever puts into it. So, if you write your agenda item a little wonky, guess what, it's still gonna be wonky. Um, but anyways, this is how it works. Uh, you would literally come to this portal, and you would just hit Submit New Agenda Item. What happens then is you, it makes you select the week of the agenda item that you want it on. So, we changed that, at first, it was just a date open entry field, but I believe we changed that to be, uh, for the agenda, correct?
Yes, so the week you select will be the week of the, uh, meeting.
Perfect. So, what that means is, everybody has to kind of keep track of, okay, I'm, I know I'm submitting this agenda item, you need to know what week you're submitting it for. A lot of times when people go on vacation, they'll submit agendas, uh, items ahead of time, that's okay, but you still have to know what week you're putting it on the agenda.
Will there be something in there so that they can't submit an agenda item late, or?
Uh-huh, it'll shut off, yeah.
It'll close off.
Yep, good question.
This is, uh-
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine, well, good question.
So, she's inundated with that.
Yep, so we created it so that it'll shut off, and nobody can put it in past Thursday at four thirty. And it'll say to them, if there's an emergency, you have to contact Lisa directly.
Is it four thirty or twelve thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Okay, Arty, she just mentioned twelve thirty.
Yeah, that's what I thought you said earlier, too.
Okay, Arty, yeah.
Four thirty.
Four hours.
Sorry, four thirty. All right, so high priority, doesn't really, that one doesn't matter so much, but you could just, um, whatever, if you wanna quicken on, click it on. This one does matter, approved by prosecutor. So, we are asking the Department Head so that, wait, there's no more confusion on the agenda item. Do you have it appro- if it needs approval by the prosecutor, press yes. If it's been approved, if not, press no, and then you got a problem, 'cause you're gonna have to get it. You know, that's gonna be on you as the Department Head. We're not, it's not on Lisa to get a prosecutor's opinion. It's our department, it's our business, we should be doing that with the prosecutor's office. Please don't put that on the clerks.
Well, what if it doesn't need approval by the prosecutor?
You'll put it in the notes. So, if it doesn't need approval by prosecutor, you'll just turn, um, off, it's fine, and you'll put it in your notes.
And it'll let you go on if you put off?
Yep. Yep. All right, so the name is the person submitting the agenda item. Um, you can have, if you don't submit the agenda items yourself as a Department Head, that's totally fine. Let's say you have a, a, an assistant, your assistant can put it in, whatever the case may be, but just know whatever email is in there is who the correspondence is gonna go back and forth to. So, just, just remember that. Uh, you'll do your drop down for department, they should all be there. Uh, you'll do a category, and there'll be a miscellaneous category, so nobody stress out, 'cause I know that stressed me out at first. Um, not everything is gonna be baked in there, we've tried to make it that way. We're working on a collective list for each department of things that you typically submit.
Like your top six.
Yeah. So, for HR, new hires, transfers, contract negotiations, stuff like that. Um, oh, there you go. Uh, thank you, perfect. Um, but there is a miscellaneous tab, so you can still click miscellaneous. All right, so this is where attachments become really important. Um, obviously, everything that you would attach needs to go into here. Uh, if it's a contract, you need to attach the contract. If it's a, uh, journal action that you want, I don't know, uh, whatever it is, put it in here, okay? And then the bottom is what's really important. Now, this will, this will be a no-go forward if you don't fill this out correctly. So, you have to put in the open text field how the agenda is supposed to be put on the Word document, okay? People are literally sending Lisa paragraphs and paragraphs and paragraphs and paragraphs. She doesn't work in your department, she doesn't know what part of that paragraph needs to go on the agenda, what does or what doesn't. We need to do a better job of making sure that we're giving her exactly what needs to go on the agenda, and this will force us to do that.
All right, so, so we, we type up the actual resolution at the bottom.
Yep.
So, for demonstration purposes, I just put, I pulled an old agenda and found the verbiage for this one.
And that's a really good, um, way to, that, Chrislyn, that's a very good tip. If you're not sure about something, you can still work with Lisa, obviously, before you submit it. But a lot of times, guys, what we do is, we recreate agenda items, right? It's the same thing every other week.
Yeah, yeah.
So, go back to your past agenda item and use that verbiage.
Yeah, that's the one question I have.
How do you save this?
What do you mean?
Well-
Like, like Gary, Gary may have something, I think, we're, we're going with-
Uh, I got, I pull up an old Word document, I amend it for whatever I'm doing here. I, can I just?
Copy and paste it, copy and paste it into there. Yep, and save your Word document.
Okay, but, but now, the new one that I sent you is gonna be up in there.
But Joe, you also, you, I, I believe you'll get a copy of that, eventually.
Of the-
Description, yeah.
Well, but what, I think what he's saying is, so you're gonna type it up in a Word doc, which is totally fine.
Yeah, let's say, let's say, let's say I do one, the next week I get a similar one.
Yeah.
How do I retrieve that back again to make the new one?
Oh, a copy will be emailed to you. So, you're gonna get an e- we haven't gotten there yet, but you'll get an email notification of everything that you submitted. So, it'll literally be up in your email, you can just copy and paste it again and re-put it in there the next week.
All right, but then here's this, though. Like, say now, as you get into this-
Mm-hmm.
There's something that Gary's done eight times a year for the past ten years. Okay, does he have to regenerate that old thing now? 'Cause Lisa can go back in hers now, and, and when she goes to figure out how to word it, she looks at last year, she copies it and just changes the date. He won't have that now, saved on his computer. So, all Department Heads are gonna have, the first time, we're gonna have to reoriginate whatever they do, 'cause they can't go and pull file from something that Lisa or, or, um, Shara, or, I'm, I'm sorry, not Shara, Paula, or Paula Ed may have done in the past, where Lisa may go now and be like, how is this worded? She pulls an old one from a year or two years ago, copies it and puts it on there. He can't go in a year or two years ago, 'cause it's all brand new and fresh to him. He's gonna have to write it from scratch all over again.
Well, we've been, we've, yeah, so we've been doing this process actually for the past two years. So, this is nothing new.
Yeah.
We've just been submitting it through email, not through a portal.
Uh, I think I'll have my Word docs-
Yeah.
That I'm just gonna copy and paste.
Let me be clear, this is nothing new. I know what you're saying, but it's just, we've been doing this behind the scenes and you haven't seen it. We're doing this manually through email, through a lot of back and forth email conversations. It's very convoluted. All this is doing is just changing the platform and how we submit things.
Like, just like the wording, let's use the conversions for example.
Mm-hmm.
He may, he may, he gives you what the amounts are, but does he, or someone may give you, one of the Departments may give you what the amounts, eighty, forty, one hundred, one-
No, we do all that work.
You do all that, but, but they have to give it to you, right?
I, no, I do all that work. I go through every single contract and put the plans together. That's all work that I did. So, I have that housed within, every Department needs to take ownership of their-
So, he won't have to do one up for his Department regarding that?
He didn't, I do it for him.
Okay.
So, what you just saw is everything HR does for everybody here, including Board of Elections.
And will still continue doing the stuff that they did, okay.
So, nothing changes there.
It's not putting more work out to them, or it's not making them do something they have not-
It should not be if they've been doing it the way that they should've been doing it the past two years. So, ever since I've been here, and I worked for John for quite some time, we always submitted everything this way through BOC agenda. This is not a change whatsoever. It's just a different electronic platform and how we do it, and it's gonna be more consistent and concise, and it will stop you from doing it incorrectly, so that way Lisa doesn't get, um, yeah.
I mean, I'm spending a lot of time put, putting the agenda together, a lot more than I should. Some Departments are very good at putting agenda items together, others are not.
Am I one of the very goods?
You are a very good.
Gary has nothing to worry about. You're doing it right, Gary, you're doing it right.
But you wanna remember, there were-
You get a gold star.
There were four clerks at one time, and now there's only two.
Gary's asking questions, you, like, a hundred percent, he gets an A plus.
For example, right now.
And there was more time, there was more time for the clerk to spend helping, handholding, I wanna say, you know, with, with some of the Departments, putting items together, but-
And part of it is our, our fault, we have a lot of, uh, transfers of money, but, uh, appropriation transfers and, uh, estimated revenue. And in the past, we've just submitted the journals that we printed off from UNIS, and it doesn't have a lot of information on it, and Lisa has had to go dig up, like, the Department information and all that stuff. So, that will be nice that, you know, I mean, 'cause we already have that information, and we can submit it that way for her.
Gotcha.
So, what this will do, once everything's put in and you hit submit, it will go to the clerk first for review. Uh, so that's very important to know, um, you know, for Department Heads, and it even tells you this, the clerk will review your submission. So, it's, when you hit submit, I know a lot of people think it goes to everybody, this will not, this will go to the clerk first to make sure that everything she needs, or kind of do a quick glance over before the Commissioners get it, to make sure everything looks correct, all the fields are inputted. Um, once she hits approve, then it'll go out to all the Commissioners.
So, I know, um, just for clarity, I know that every Department is supposed to come up with their own resolutions, that's what we should have. But what about if a Department puts in there just a bunch of paragraphs?
She'll take it back, so she'll reject it. So, we now have a reject option, so yay, everybody buckle up. So, um, yeah, so now-
Close it on up.
Yeah.
You know what, this is the only way that I can have more time to work on backup.
Yeah, it's, I will tell you-
I mean, Christie's been doing a lot of the, you know, the lion's share of the backup, as I did when Paula was the clerk, and I was the only journal clerk back there.
I think for me-
So, this will give me more time to work on backup.
Can we move the reject button to forward them to Gary, so he can fix them to other Department Heads? This isn't so good.
I think for me too, um, something that I've noticed, guys, is we're not recreating the web. Even if you're not sure of an agenda item, all of the old agendas are housed on the website. All you need to do is take the, take the initiative and go back and look how you submit an agenda item ten years ago. You know, I mean, we just have to put a little bit of due diligence forward. Um, you gotta start putting your fund numbers on items, we, we have to be better, um, and that'll make us all better in the long run, um, and more effective, and we're gonna be working smarter, not harder, which is saving money, right?
But we still have to attach all these attachments, same thing, like prosecutor's opinion, now do I have to send proof of prosecutor's opinion?
Yeah, that's, that would be in your attach, so anything in your attach file, the best thing that I can tell Department Heads is proof of prosecutor's opinion would be an email from Bill or Sam or Jason Hov, that says, okay, looks good. If you don't have it, then I expect, then what we should do is, on a, on a Department Head letterhead or something, write up, I don't need a prosecutor's opinion, and attach that. Or whatever you need to do to put it on there, but make it very clear, either you do or don't need it, and that way you've covered your bases. All right? So, uh, then Lisa will, you know, here, she'll either say it's approved or declined, and her email back will be, there'll be notes that will tell you, your description didn't have a fund number, you didn't have attachments, whatever the case may be. So, she's gonna write that back to you right here, no attachments, and hit decline. And then that email's gonna go to that Department Head or whoever submitted that agenda item to say, your agenda item has been declined, and what to fix. All right?
So many declines in a year, do we get, like, penalized?
Think you're in school.
I know, I know. I mean, I'm really sorry, but it's like that.
I know, but ultimately, it's really gonna, it's gonna save a lot, it really is.
Yeah, well, once, so let me go over actual go-live dates, so we're not just gonna, like, you know, throw this at you guys, that's not our goal here. This is just an initial kickoff. Uh, we're gonna have a training, don't worry, everybody, yay, your favorite. We're all gonna get together and train on this, so three-five was just the kickoff to the Commissioners. Uh, three-twenty-one will be our training for go-live, and then we plan to go live with this on three-twenty-two, which then means all agenda items at three-twenty-two, therefore, at thereafter, have to be submitted this way. So, we're gonna have a training on the twenty-first. And I would highly encourage, and we'll put this together, but at the training, um, have anybody attend, if you submit agenda items, or if you have somebody else in your Department submit agenda items, they should be at this training.
Will that be on the third floor, or?
Here, and we're gonna screen it live, so you can actually play with it.
No, it'd be, it'd be, yeah, we can put it up, right.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All right.
Yo, and this, this is gonna be the big thing. This, this is one of prime examples of garbage in, garbage out. If we don't require our Department Heads to submit this correctly, it's gonna end up being a disaster. So, we, we, we need to start from day one, asking them to please start using, please use it correctly. And I, uh, I also wanna add, you know, Kristen did- did a real nice job getting all this together and everything went very well.
Yes, she does. She's fabulous. Thank you.
Another gold star. Gold stars to everybody. Yay!
Gary, you brought the answer in here.
Gary, you're cut off. No, I'm kidding.
Okay, let's say, send something over and, and, you know, I'm- it's Thursday afternoon.
Gary, that's enough for us.
Alright.
Like right before the job.
So you said, "Tell me no."
But then, like, but then it gets declined. Am I still able to get it on next week's agenda if it's urgent?
Uh-
Make the changes and still get it on?
I think- I think so.
Okay, alright.
Or you could just- you're right, no, I'm kidding. Do it as you do it and don't worry about it. You've been doing great.
Okay.
No, it's, um, yeah. Unfortunately, there's just a lot of things that, again, we as department heads and elected officials even too, we need to own our own businesses, right? I mean, nobody else would know about- she- we shouldn't expect her to know your funding sources. We shouldn't expect her to know your, you know, capital improvement needs. We- that- that has to come from us as department heads. And we really need to start getting back to that.
I can see this is on the internet, so I-
Yeah! Yeah, it'll be on- there'll be a link on the internet. We're- our goal is to all go to SharePoint. Uh, as we're going towards Office 365, so yay! Um, but until then, we'll have a link. I already made sure to Chris when I said, what about people who don't have Office 365? So we'll have a link on there.
I still can.
Yeah, and I- I created documentation on how to sign in. If you're not on Off- Office 365 yet, you'll have to sign in with MFA, but I have, so that all flowed out.
Cause I know, like, for our office to smarten, I would submit, or that would be-
Okay, we'll get that fixed. Okay, um, so that's another point that Diane, uh, just brought up. We're also- we're- we're on a lot of projects right now. But another thing that we're doing is also streamlining Cronos, it's a long timekeeping system. Um, and making sure that people put in, at least under the commissioners, if you're under the commissioners payroll. Uh, we're making sure that people are submitting their time off through the portal the correct way. Uh, no more of this paper, back and forth confusion. It's 2024. We have the systems, we have the database. We need to move forward. So we are. It's just taking time and it's, um, small change in small increments. But the goal is to get everybody to that point.
Now, we need to use our software.
We have it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Efficiency. Efficiency saves money. That's the bottom line, so.
Save my work for 2024 is simplicity.
There you go.
It seems like Alex has a lot of free time on her plate if anyone hasn't even worked, they wanna throw him. More human resources. We'll see how much she can take from she troubles.
Basically, that's-
No, great job, great job. That's- you know, you're working on it.
Well, no, it's all these- it's- it's all these guys. There's a lot of things that we work on behind the scenes. But all the- honestly, it is something too that I hope everybody here is filing clear. Trumbull County is- these are the good things that people don't necessarily see happening behind the scenes. This is efficiency. And that is something that I take very serious. And the more efficient we can be, again, the more dollars we save in comp time. You know, Lisa's not gonna hopefully need as much comp time. These are all equivalent to hopefully re- reductions in cost. So we have to keep moving forward and I- I am so thankful to all the department heads that do this. And if you don't, it's time to get on the bus. Get on the bus or get off the bus.
That's the next thing.
Yeah, right. Well, it's- it's my, like, pun, you know, like, either we're on the bus or we're off the bus. Or you're gonna get run over by the bus. I'm not sure, but let's get going.
Depends who's driving that bus.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay, who has- who's next?
Um, no, I'm okay.
Yeah, Chief Deputy, Trump County Sheriff's Office. Um, can you guys hear me?
We can, but they need that for the public.
Oh, alright. Um, I'm here just looking for a little bit of clarification, a little bit of direction. Um, again, going back to ARPA funding, we have several projects that we've- we've put in for. They're need projects. They're projects that need completed. Jail flooring, jail lighting, body cameras, because we just received a partial grant. We're putting the maybe pile and have no direction. Our quotes are only good for thirty days. We don't know if it's gonna be an approved expense by the- by the attorneys that are handling this. How do we know that- that we can get these to the attorney to approve it so we can either continue forward or check with the auditors office for, you know, other sources of funding? These- these are actually, again, need projects. These aren't projects that- that we're just taking on a whim. Um, right now, I have five- five projects that I know of that are in the queue. Total on those projects is only about seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to complete all five projects. And we're talking major projects. Jail lighting, jail flooring, body cameras. You know, things that- things that we need moving forward. There's, uh, the kitchen in the jails, another area of concern that we've had. And that area of concern is replace something every year, a major appliance that we need that's at end of life. A body scanner, uh, to- to improve the security within our jail and cut down the contraband. That's coming to end of life. That's about an eighty thousand dollar upgrade project that's in the queue. That could go at any point in time. And- and we need that upgraded. So the direction that we need is instead of being put on the maybe pile, we kinda need an answer on, are- are we considering these projects? Are we not? Are we- am I looking for other sources of funding? Or are these going to the attorney? What- we just don't know what's happening.
What- when were these submitted?
Uh, within the last- within the last month.
Okay, that- see, yeah, see, the portal's closed right now, so they're not gonna be entertained. I mean, until we get through what we have here, we have forty-some that are yeses that we haven't addressed yet. And then we have another thirty-some maybes. And the- when the portal was closed, it was closed. It was closed for a reason, so that we can take care of all the requests that we had before we ran out of money. So I don't mean to be a bearer of bad news, but you're not gonna get all that money from ARPA, I can tell you. I- in my opinion, just because there are so many other causes. Now, if you had emergency need of something, you know, body cameras, safety things, I would prioritize those. Jail flooring, kitchen, lighting in the jail, that's something I would say, yeah, go to the auditor and see what we have other- alternative funds. Because there are a lot of worthy causes that we don't have the funds for that are pending. That we're gonna run out. We'll be down to our last two million if everything's approved. And then in the maybe pile, there's a bunch of great ones there. And the Sheriff's Department has gotten three million and then nine hundred thousand for vehicles and some other stuff, yes.
The Sheriff's Office didn't get three million dollars for the revenue replacement. The general fund got three million dollars from revenue replacement. And it was- it could only be used for certain things. So it was decided at the time to use the sheriff's salaries towards that three hundred, or that three million dollars. And, I mean, at the time, we just transferred the three million at the end of the year. We didn't look at who it was. We just took a pay period and certain category of, you know, that we could pinpoint on there. And that was to generate- gen- um, I'm sorry, to benefit the entire general fund as a whole. But it wasn't specifically for the Sheriff's.
But if it wasn't for the general fund, it would've been used somewhere else or it could've been used as a general fund for other- for other means.
Well, the board at the time committed a ten million dollars to revenue replacement for the general fund. And it was decided at the time to do three million, like, the first year, three million this year.
By the way, if there ever a county, I think every single county took the ten million, took the maximum amount for the general fund.
But then we decided not to do that the second year. So we've just done the three million. And again, it was- the sheriff's off- sheriff's, right, offices salaries were moved to ARPA for that three million dollars because we were limited in what we could use it for. We couldn't use it, like, for auditor's office or IT. There was specific ones that had these, for safety services.
It had to be used for safety services, public, yeah, public response.
But nine-one-one was, like, a different fund. So it was decided at the time to- for the general fund.
That's- it was very stringent.
And we- in the general fund, safety services was the sheriff's office.
We didn't have that many.
But it wasn't- it wasn't for them. It was- and- and we ended up having, uh, the general fund had a cash carryover the next year, over five million dollars. So it benefited the entire, uh, all the departments in the general fund that they could appropriate or budget more money the next year. And they kee- I think we keep getting stuck on that, that it was for specifically the sheriff's office, but it was not. It was for the general fund as a whole. It was just, we were- could only use certain salaries.
Well, and I guess maybe until Martha cleared things up with her spreadsheets and stuff, that's what it looked like on the books. And when I got here, that's what it looked like it went. Now, the vehicle, same thing?
No, that's- the vehicle was there. The vehicle was there contract.
Or the nine hundred and eight thousand, part of it.
Yeah, the- the vehicles, yeah, the vehicles were out of work. That was, and that was, what, twenty?
Yeah, yeah. But the revenue replacement, what?
Twenty twenty-two, correct? I believe.
It was in the very beginning. It was in the very beginning.
Yeah, we didn't spend any money in twenty-one, so I had to do twenty-two.
Right. Right. So it's been over- it's been a couple of years since we've actually left.
But it's the same mon- same ARPA money. It's the same pot of money. It's the same thirty million.
Yeah, it's not fair to that money either.
Right. Um, okay, really, that's- that was my only question.
Well, if you- Commissioner, if you agree differently, but I- I think-
But, yes, uh, all I wanna say is, um, in the budget hearings, you had a capital expenditure cost to- were these included in the capital costs?
No. And- and, no, I didn't have a capital improvements cost in my- in my budget. If you remember correctly, the only- the only capital improvement that I actually had added to it was the cruisers.
Right.
Which we cut. Um, so we have- we've already cut those out of my budget. So these are capital improvements that we're looking at above and beyond. And again, they're need.
I mean, there are facilities, so we- we do need to look at these.
It's- it's just that-
I- it sounds like there's a lot of different asks here, but if- we do this to communities and different organizations. If you can narrow those down to your two most pressing or one most pressing, we can start taking- taking these. And then next year, looking at capital improvements.
And I- and I would say safety, officer safety, body cameras and scanner would be the top two to jump out at me.
Well, the jail inspection, the jail inspection gets dinged on the- on the lighting every year.
And- and that could be something through general funds or other stuff.
Martha's like to talk, so she asked to be unmuted.
Okay. Let's just hear Martha's to say.
Alright, good.
That was gonna go.
Bye, Gary.
What's that?
Any pre-?
Bye, Gary. Bye, Bob. Bye. Bye, gold star.
Martha, go ahead. Star six.
I'm here. And muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Alright, so, um, one of the things I wanted to point out as you're considering these is how much money is actually left. Um, you've added some things to the yes list in the last couple of weeks. And so between the yes, what you have on the yes list, things that are either in process with the attorney or waiting to be sent to the attorney, um, the, um, allocated and promised, um, is at thirty-six point seven million. You have about one point eight million left. So I know that, um, uh, that we're talking about seven hundred and some thousand, but realize that that's, um, almost half of what we have left. And we still have requests from townships on the maybe list that you've never addressed, those kinds of things. And that, by the way, that- that six point one, um, almost six point two that we're talking about on the yes list includes Colsberg. And also, I just added the Gerard because you asked me to do that. So I've- I've worked on that. Um, the- if the commissioners want to review and look at the requests from the sheriff's office, I do now have all of them on the commissioner's drive. So if you go to the commissioner's drive, you can look at each of those. There's a, uh, folder for ARPA requests. There's a folder under that for sheriff's office. All of those are in.
Martha, let me ask you this. How do they get in the portal? Cause we closed it and we weren't allowing anything else in the portal unless the two commissioners approve. Opening it up and letting it happen.
Well, you've- you've actually let a lot in, so I won't go there. But I get sent requests and, um, I- I let you guys know when I get requests. I still get requests. And you guys have allowed other people, uh, good example Gerard, good example Colsberg, to send me requests. When people send them to me, I still put them out there and still introduce them to you, but you guys aren't considering them.
Okay.
Alright?
Martha, Martha, I- I have a question, cause it's just based on the numbers that you just said. So we had thirty-six million dollars in ARPA funding?
No, we had thirty-eight million. A little over. We had thirty-eight and change.
Okay, and- and nine hundred, only nine hundred thousand dollars of that was dedicated to the sheriff's office, or actual sheriff's office.
That's correct.
But that would've been the second largest request.
Just checking.
That would've been the second largest, right, Martha? You did a million to?
Here- here's my recommendation. Pair those down and we can- we can start on one or two of those things. But, uh, for next year and your capital improvement, we can- we can start to tackle those. But, uh, as far as, if we got every department's wish list, we would be in a- you know that.
Sure.
And- and, uh, but- but we wanna be able to accommodate some of the most pressing things that you have, so.
And you- and not to cut you off, but we- we- that's one of the reasons why I didn't put capital improvements in my budget early on. It's not a wish list thing. These- these are gonna be needed from an office. Is the only reason we're even here, so.
And, uh, the cards were a part of the November budget. Uh, we did work, uh, with the sheriff's office because, as you know from our, uh, list last week, you know, the requests we had were a lot greater than what our estimated revenue or cash carry forward is. Um, and we took the cards off of there with the cooperation of the sheriff's office that we would look into, like, maybe sales tax or casino or other money later in the year that we have available for that. And they were trying to keep the general fund budget that we're hoping that you will pass tomorrow to just the general operating right now. Because it was, like, we were cutting so much because of the requests for everyone were so much greater than the actual estimated revenue and unencumbered cash that we have coming forward. So.
Um, I- I just wanna add, uh-
Major Villanueva.
Major Villanueva, the Trump County Sheriff's Office. I just wanna add, um, it's obvious the importance of the body cameras. And with having a grant, uh, the state of Ohio giving us a grant board, um, that only provides us twelve body cameras. Um, there's sixty deputies. Um, so that's why we put in the ARPA fund request for that. The radios is a different, uh, is- is- is much different. So current, right now, we have sixty mobile radios and seventy portable radios under the Marx radio system. I was told by Bearcom that our radios need upgraded for two thousand and twenty-five. Or else they don't work anymore. Um, so either we find a way to, um, get those upgraded, which will be, um, total cost of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Um, or we purchase new radios, which is gonna be up over seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, so it's, uh, we def- define the funds to reprogram the hundred and thirty radios that we currently have. But right now, we have a deputy that needs a radio and, uh, we have two ordered. They'll be here in May. Um, but we also wanted to use that ARPA fund to have spare radios because, uh, they get run over. By a car, you know, his radio, his battery broke. Um, so different things, so, um.
Not to- not to sound brash or anything, but why were these requests brought up before we closed the portal? When we were going over everything?
We just- we just found out.
We knew radios were gonna get bad a year ago, sure, six months ago. We knew cameras were important a year ago, or six months ago. Why right now?
Not really. But not really. We had-
Why wouldn't we have to sell into the money?
We had the- we had the body cams. We had probably six requests for different grants. We finally got a partial grant, um, which will help us towards the funding. We're trying everything not to empower ARPA. Um, the- the radios, the radios, they just came out with, not even a month ago. I believe they notified us they were gonna be end of life in twenty twenty-five. So some of the stuff, you know, the jail flooring, we've been asking for for seven years. Uh, that was in my first budget request seven years ago. You know, and the- the lighting is an issue that came up in our last jail inspection. Um, we were told- we were told early on that after the cars, that our ARPA funding was really no longer gonna be available for us. Okay, that's fine. But then again, the sheriff came back to us approximately, what, six weeks ago, eight weeks ago? And said that you had- you had mentioned that there's six and a half more million dollars that was available for ARPA funding in a meeting. That's why the request came in at that point. Um, because if there's additional money available and people are told to get their requests in, we're gonna get our requests in. And we're not gonna be told we didn't apply for. That's why we're here.
Right. Well, they- they were told when we had the money right there, but we had a deadline in the portal date. And no one was told after that to put money in after we closed the portal. And I'm just trying to be fair to all the entities because-
And keep in mind, we have put millions and millions of dollars into that jail. Yeah, in my time here.
Right.
And to say that we haven't gotten the flooring done yet, but we've put upwards of five million dollars into that jail. So, um, it's not telling the whole picture here, so.
Right. And- and I- and I didn't mean to imply that. If I did, I apologize.
Okay. No, and- and things do need upgraded. We- we- we recognize that. So I think you pare down, uh, like everybody else has, and then we- we tackle these things one at a time, you know? Um, seven hundred and fifty thousand off the- off the rip when the portal was already closed is gonna be tough to swing, so.
Well, yeah, it's- and like I said, that's a total. And the biggest part of that, the body cams are two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. With the grant on top of that. So it's not a- not a cheap endeavor.
You know, like you said, we got the list and then we got the maybes. Maybe the sheriff wants to call those people on the maybes and tell them, nope, you're not getting it because it's coming to me now. I don't wanna call those people on the maybes and say, we just jumped the sheriff's department ahead of all you before we request your- your request. That's all I'm saying with this, is there was a fair timeline for everybody. And when we're- when the dust settles, we'll see what we have left. And I think some of the things aren't gonna be approved and I think we're gonna be in the two to three million dollar range, maybe when we're done, but we don't know that. We may be, as Martha said, as low as one point two. And if we're cutting it that close, then we really- we do have some great, great projects out there that can use ARPA funding for where- the way it was purely intended, that we gotta make sure we- we spread that money as many areas as we can. And- and not saying we can't fund your stuff, but there are bond stuff that we do. There are general fund stuff that we do. There are other, uh, capital improvements, things like that, that we can look at, um, as if ARPA never existed. You know, we would still have to take care of those things if we never had any of those funds. So that's something that we could address in the- in the future.
Okay.
And I think that I understand. Go ahead, Martha.
This is saying that I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Commissioner French, go. Go ahead.
Yes. Um, as it relates to anything that is grants, funds, and there's leverage required, those need to be priorities. I'm not familiar with the grant applications that the sheriff's department has right now, but those are extremely time sensitive. And if there's any availability for funds related to body cameras or radios where they simply need a portion as match money in order to meet a deadline and to decrease the future cost of the county, those need to be made priorities because it makes financial sense.
What needs to be priority is- is public safety first and foremost. You know, anything that affects public safety is gonna be prioritized, whether match money or not.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I'm- I'm asking whoever's in the room that's bringing out the- the body cameras and the radios, who mentioned that there's a grant that's being applied for, I'm- I'm asking that i- if there's a deadline or something because I believe that we need to make sure that that is done because it will end up costing more money in the long run if we miss the ability to put in a portion for match. Does that make sense?
Yes, this is Major- this is Major Tony going away, but there is no match for the, um, Governor Dewine's body camera grant, which we re-
Yeah.
But it doesn't- doesn't cover everything.
But it does not cover every- every deputy that would need a body camera.
Even still though, it gives us an opportunity to have, I think you said eighteen, I can't remember what you just said. But if there's a portion for us- pardon me?
I'm sorry, twelve cameras, yes.
Twelve. So if there's a portion for us to match that and receive funding towards something that we're going to need anyway, I would support moving that to a high priority because otherwise we'll be spending full price for those things as opposed to-
There is no match. There- there is no match to that. He just said, they're giving a grant for the twelve, but there's no match.
What I'm-
We're not giving them a discount. We buy more.
We would- okay, I might not be understanding this, but we would be providing the match, if I'm not mistaken. They're asking the two commissioners for it.
We are not. We are not. There is no match. We got a straight grant from the governor for twelve cameras. That's it, period. We don't get any more additional ones. If we put up money, we don't get any discount. They're already giving us twelve. And that's- that's a pure grant. That's it. No match.
Okay, so it's a hundred percent and there's nothing- they're just at- cause I don't have anything related to this re- request. Was something emailed?
This is brand new. That- they're bringing it to us today and handing it out. This is brand new, that they're bringing it to us today and handing it out.
We're looking for direction.
This is Auditor Yoder. I received the request, um, last week. It was forwarded to me, uh, before I had it, uh, before I left the office. I was trying to get a lot done. I did not get it on the commissioner's drive then. I just put it on the drive. So it is there and accessible to all of the commissioners. The, the radios, I'm sorry, excuse me, the radios and the body cameras have been on there for several weeks. They're on the drive.
Is there a match on the radios or on the body cameras? So no match on either of them, so there isn't a deadline where we have to act now or it's going to cost us a little more. Yeah, of course, prices may go up for things, but it isn't like a one-time deal where we have to get these in by April thirtieth to get this certain price.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Here's what I propose, here's what I propose.
I was going to say, is there, is there funding available? Uh, I know that they work on obtaining grants. Is there any other funding available so that it could be reduced the burden to, to the county?
We've, we've applied for several grants whenever it came to the body cameras, that's why we're at, at this point. Um, you know, it, it all depends on us getting approved on the funding for the grants. And this is the first one out of five, I think, that we've actually been awarded any money, so.
And our original grant proposal was over three hundred thousand dollars for this grant. We were only awarded, uh, which we've only seen the pre-award, that's why it hasn't gone to the commissioners yet. Um, but the turn, I'm sorry, the governor, um, just listed us as a recipient of sixty-eight thousand out of our original three hundred plus thousand request.
Okay, and you said that you applied for several other ones. I, whenever we, whenever we have grant applications and we look at the method in which they're ranked, sometimes that helps you to, um, put in a more favorable application request. Are, are border any of them that we're asking about local match, just out of curiosity?
No, uh, in fact, uh, we, we put in for several federal, uh, grants and state and local, uh, grants for body cameras, none of which asked for a match.
Here's, here's what I propose, obviously, those are the two most pressing things with the body cameras and the radios. Let's, let's, uh, if, if there's ARPA money left over, we can fund through ARPA money. If not, we can get from either casino revenue or sales tax and, and address those issues. And the capital improvements can be put off, um, into next year.
And I, I would also like to say, last week, we did talk about Gerard not being on the li- list. I, I believe that Auditor Yoder is exactly right. I think one of the reasons that we weren't considering Gerard for the ambulance is, you know, they're a city. They, they have a LMI population, they had their own, um, ARPA money that came to them. Um, and we were looking, they also were, you know, got a lot of favor toward them related to the, uh, demolitions for CMP. So my, my preference would be to put that, um, ambulance for them on the back burner because it could also adversely affect a business, uh, in that direction that provides those services and use that towards, um, safety related to our, to our county.
You might, you may want to, you may want to discuss with, uh, Mr. Ponzio from Gerard. They're, they're trying to implement their own ambulance service and, um, uh, save costs of their residents. They're just looking for assistance from the commissioners. And I don't know if that'll be enough to offset the cost anyway. But I think the two most pressing things are the, are the public safety issues of the radios and the, and the vests. And, um, I'm willing to take them out of sales tax or, or casino revenue or, uh, MCO sales tax if we need to, uh, to.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather take it out of that request for, to Gerard because that'll also put a, a, could potentially put a, uh, business.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not taking the ambulance away from Gerard. They, they, they show need, there's four communities for it. You know, I support that. I believe Commissioner Camelisa supports it, um.
Yeah, and I, I, I think you should reach, Commissioner, not, not to be flip, but I think you should reach out to Mr. Ponzio. He could, he could, uh, get you up to speed on that too, if you, if you choose to. He's the safety director out there.
And we don't know if ambulance is even going to qualify yet. Let's see what happens with these first ones. Before we get the cart before the horse.
Well, I just, I think it's more important to cover our, our safety with the body cameras and the radios over a community's, um, ambulances when they already have, uh, services that are being provided, uh, in, in that area privately. So that's the part of the.
I, I just said we would do that, whether it be with ARPA or sales tax money, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is that okay with everyone? Is that all right?
No, thank you, we just wanted to bring.
Yeah, like I said, to use some clarification.
Well, Martha, we'll be back next week, we'll be able to look at the ARPA spreadsheets and be able to go over that a little more as far as each request that you had. Like she said, she put it in there, but we haven't got paper copies of it yet. I mean, we could look it up in the system, of course, but we didn't even know it was there until you addressed us and said, it's here. And she said, I put it there, but I didn't tell you guys about it yet. Usually she would be first to come to us and then, you know, if we got this request in and what do you want to do with it is what she would usually ask us.
And, and we had no idea in the, in the budget hearings, when there's no capital improvement, you know, uh.
Right.
Items that were on there. We're, we're learning about this now, so.
Well, and, you know, to clarify.
I know, I know it's been on there in the past, but.
But to clarify where the, where the ARPA one, ones were put in, you know, they're actually, the ones dated February first, the other ones dated February second, so they've been, been in there for over a month.
Portal was closed in December, though.
And we thought the portal was closed, so that's where it's not getting to us.
That's why I'm saying that, again, we don't need to be on the same page, so.
Commissioners, just, just to clarify, and I would have to look, but I'm fairly certain that I made a note of the, of putting those, the two first ones, that I did put on, I put those on the drive almost as soon as I got them and I put a note on it within your update that I gave you at that time. You guys were there, but, but.
Well, there, the good thing is, there is no deadline for matching grant. There is no thing where we got to hurry up and jump and run to Tanya on this. Yes, body cameras are essential, yes, radios are absolutely essential, but there isn't anything we're going to miss out that is going to cost us a little more if we give it another week or so. And then the lighting, the floor, yeah, I agree it needs done, but you, you have to understand too. I know you said you only got nine hundred, but that's still the third, second or third highest request we've given out. And the next one after that was probably four hundred thousand of liberty. So, um, you did get a lion's share of the ARPA money more than anybody else already. So even though it's only nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, that's still a big chunk.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just talking about like the, the jail stuff that we're looking at. I mean, you know, realistically, we're, we're in charge of the jail, but it's still, it's still.
It's our building, yeah, so. And we've done, we've done a lot to approve the, the jail and that's not to be forgotten either. And I know that we're always going to have, uh, projects that we have to do and I think those are two that are on our future list, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Lisa.
Am I adding the letter of support?
Yes.
For Gerard, want to be a agenda?
Yes, yes. Bill Danzo, do you have anything?
Nothing new right now for me.
Thank you again for attending. Couple of issues came up today and it's nice to be able to look at you and see the head nod, yes, that it's approved, yes, I got it. It just makes us feel a little more sure when we go in tomorrow to back up the stuff that we need to do that it's, at its due diligence and there's nothing that is going to catch you off guard. And on that, I guess, uh.
Yeah, Commissioner Loy, just one more thing. Martha Yoder.
Yes, Martha.
County auditor. Um, I noticed you kind of moved very quickly over item three, the angle appropriation resolution. I wanted to make sure you've received all of the, the attachments from, uh, Chrissy Sastaric. Um, she is actually specifically there in case you had questions before you vote tomorrow. So I wanted to make sure that any specific questions on that agenda item that you ask them.
Those have, those have been addressed and thank you, uh, Auditor Yoder and Chrissy for that.
Excellent. Mark and I, from IT, we're going to pass this closing, uh, twenty-three and posting twenty-four this afternoon so that once you guys approve it tomorrow, we'll be able to stay late tomorrow and get that done so those departments can pay bills like normal on, on Thursday and not have to worry about going through me for every little re, uh, over budget request for requisition, the purchase orders. We're, we're very far behind on that since it was just one person.
I guess.
Yes.
Where we couldn't.
So if you have any questions, please, yes, well, you know.
I guess the last thing I have would be, uh, we know nine-one-one is always hiring. They're always in the process of trying to fill their void. We've got a clerk's position that's open. When are we going to move it on that? Bill, you've got a couple of maintenance positions that are open. When are we going to post those?
Just any positions, yes.
Yes, I mean, it's going to be posted soon.
Yes, we will post them as soon as I get without.
Uh, March first was the retirement that you guys just, obviously, you know, approved last week. So it is a county practice.
But we had one before that too, so there's two positions open?
Yep, and we had nobody who had interest in that one. So all these positions that are left open are positions that have consistently been posted with no lack of extern, with, with a lack of external interest. Um, we had one lady ready for the last one and she didn't end up passing one of her prerequisites, which is either a background test or a drug test. So again, that took us a long time and that's about three months that we wasted of time. Uh, again, that's all part of the hiring process, there's not much we can do with that. So we do have, uh, the option to post two custodians, which I talked with Bill. We're going to post those, they're afternoon custodians. Um, again, very hard to find anybody who wants to work four-thirty PM to twelve-thirty AM at what, starting wage of thirteen, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, but those will be forthcoming, um.
But with benefits?
With benefits, absolutely. Um, and we do always try to highlight those things, but again, you know. Um, then we do have a clerk position that was posted. We interviewed, we took a lot of time, went through, and unfortunately, there, there was just nobody who, um, could do this type of work in that group of applicants. Um, and that was very evident during the interviews. Yeah. That Lisa and myself did with Chrissy as well, Chrissy as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we could look to repost that, uh, but Lisa told me to wait because they're doing pretty well right now. And we're trying to put in collaborative software that is trying to hopefully minimize their, you know, their pain. Um, and let's kind of see where we land with that. Um, but whenever Lisa tells me to go, I'll go. I mean, that's just, but we have done it once before and I don't, please don't take this the wrong way, but it's a lot of time on HR that we keep kind of posting these jobs and we get down a pike and then we don't find anybody. But that's life, right? So that's where we're at. Um, the nine-one-one corrections officers, uh, or, excuse me, the corrections officers within the jail, I helped them do an Indeed post. We've got nobody from it. They won't even fill out the application. I mean, that's step one, is fill out the application. And it says that all over our Indeed posting and they won't fill out the application because their job takes a specific eighteen-page application where they do certain background checks and stuff like that. Um, so HR is putting everything out there, the best to our capabilities and we're not getting a lot of, um, qualified candidates is what I would say for the job. And I know a lot of people say, well, you know, how, what is it really, how qualified, you, you have. We do make sure people are qualified for these jobs. Uh, we make sure, we take that very serious and we make sure that we put people through interview process that's interactive and we ask them if they could do this, this, and this because we don't want to sell a bill of goods to somebody and we don't want to hire somebody that we're not going to retain. So a lot of work, a lot of work. So we'll get those, if you want me to post my job, I will, but I think we were on hold with that one.
I mean, with software, with getting these software and everything, I think some, some job descriptions are changing.
Yep.
So we're, we were kind of waiting to see what exactly we need.
She is correct. We also too are in a little bit of a, um, it's not a predicament, but it's a different scenario where we can't post, uh, the clerk's job because she is filling it as an interim clerk. We can't post her assistant clerk's job because she's, you know, we're leaving that open pending whatever may happen, you know. We can't do that. Uh, so, yeah, there's some interesting nuances around what's going on right now and, and that, and your guidance department specifically, um.
Well, that's why I think we need a clerk, because if one more step up the clerk and then you have an assistant, we feel that we have nobody left, that's clerk clerk. So I think, in my opinion, we need to get on it.
I don't disagree. I mean, it's just, it's whatever you guys want to do. If you want us to post it again, we absolutely will.
Yeah, I think it's time to post again, especially if there's potential applicants out there that we can find.
General clerk one, um, we'll be posting, like I said, two maintenance positions and then we have countless positions that are currently ongoing. So again, we have nine-one-one dispatchers, those are, that's an ongoing. Uh, that's been out there for year after year after year. We don't ever take that position down, that's on our website. We don't ever take down corrections officers, that's on our website. Um, I think we have multiple ongoing posts, quite a few, so. Yep. But unfortunately, we can post jobs all we want. If people don't follow the steps to get that job, there's nothing we can do.
Right, understood.
And step one would be filling out an application for anybody who listens to these meetings. I mean, you have to fill out an application for a job. That should be just, that's step one.
Tim, you guys are good running ITT with nine-one-one center right now without bringing a dedicated person in there?
Right now, yes. I mean, like I said, it's helped together with duct tape and paper clips, but we're, we're limping along. Um, I, it may get to a point if they start doing some upgrades in there, it probably would get them to be a full-time IT person there. Especially when down the road coming with a move.
And would that be under them, under you?
I, I would say probably under them. Um, again, it'd be a discussion between here, exactly what the best.
Okay. Commissioner?
Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.